Call them on the meeting to order. 6:35. Go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Laurel and this is my husband Steve Leboitz. We'd like to start off by thanking Talon County Council, the Board of Ed for granting us this special meeting. We've had multiple meetings with Dr. Willett, town representatives, the building committee, and the construction representatives working on the new Birch Grove site. And we thank you all for your time and your interest. We do have a dream to build a Miracle Field in Talon, but we're not alone in this vision. Tonight, we have parents of current and former players joining us, as well as buddies and families that have been involved. We have a Miracle League Committee of 15 volunteer members and are accepting volunteers. So if this project gets you excited, let us know. We hope to be able to answer your questions this evening about our project, or we will certainly get back if we don't have the answers. First off, I hope you've been all been able to read our presentation that we gave. But a little bit of background, Challenger Baseball is a division of American Little League, was founded in 1989, 32 years ago. Steve and I became involved with Challenger Baseball through the Civitan organization in Windsor. In 1996, we along with Ted Connolly began Challenger in Talon. Every year, we have a team of players and have recruited able-bodied buddies to be peer mentors. That socialization is a huge part of our program. It's been an amazing journey for us and our three children. These experiences shared with these athletes and their families have been a gift to all of us. Our families have appreciated the opportunity given to their athletes, allowing them to enjoy the great American game of baseball. However, challenges have faced our athletes and their families with difficulties that were caused by the environments we played on. And we hope that these may be preventable. We want better for them. We want them to have a bit easier time to get their athlete on and off the field and not to worry about injuries. About three years ago, a committee was formed to begin investigating the feasibility and location of a Miracle Field in Talon. We have a wonderful committee of talented individuals that share our passion for children, sports, inclusion, and fun. Steve and I have been very involved in the Adams Adventure Playground project and see this as a very similar project.
Now I want to take the opportunity to introduce our committee members. And the reason I want to do that is we couldn't have done it on our own. And each of the committee has expertise, Tammy. So when you're asking questions, I can help direct you to the expert who can answer these questions. But first, I want to start with Lisa and Roy Daniels. They're co-coaches of ours, they're parents of a former athlete. So they can answer questions on coaching or as former parents, along with Bill Scully, who was a parent of a former player. Brett Jones is on our committee. He's a Lions Club member, and he's pretty much our liaison for community involvement of other organizations in town. Joe DeBarry is on the Talon Baseball Board, and he's also our grant writer. Roger Nesnako is also on the Board of Talon Baseball and can answer where Talon Baseball stands on the project. Jeff Gallagher on our committee is a parent of an athlete, Jacob, and also is the top soccer coach, so he can discuss some Talon soccer. Mike Byham and Steve Harber are in charge of our financing and our donors. Todd Penny, without him, we wouldn't be where we are now. He's a project engineer, and he can answer any questions about cost of design should be addressed to him. Brian Leboitz is our team manager, and he's also a liaison at Talon Little League and is a former buddy. Rich Suska is our contract designer. And I want to thank Todd Rowland, who's also a parent of a former player. We're not sure, Tammy, if this individual's on or not, because with Zoom you can't tell. We invited Dave Putnam, the East Lime Recreation Director, and Executive Director of the Miracle League of Southeastern Connecticut, who we're mirroring our project after theirs, and they've just completed their project and also used the turf system we're using. But Dave's been a wonderful resource for us. So hopefully he is on the call, I'm not sure, and he can answer questions regarding East Lime and how their project went and everything else.
Yes, I'm here.
Good. Thank you, Dave, for being here.
Our job tonight is to answer your questions. First question you may have is why a Miracle Field? A Miracle Field was founded in Georgia in 1998. There are over 325 Miracle Fields throughout the country. Our Miracle League Committee has met many times and has worked with the National Miracle League and the Connecticut Miracle League. Last week, Steve and I used the money we received when we were awarded Lions Citizen of the Year Award a few years back to join the Miracle League. By joining the Miracle League, we have access to guidelines and support needed to build a Miracle Field in Talon. There are over 300 school-aged children in Talon with disabilities and over 1,000 in Talon County.
Okay, now we're going to go through the presentations. First slide Laurel went over. So the players have determination, they have heart, and all they need is a field. This is a view of what the Miracle Field would look like. It's flat and smooth, accessible for all. Everyone can play on it. So it's an all-inclusive field, and we anticipate it being used by U6 Soccer, Top Soccer, P-Ball, and our Miracle League Challenger players. It's more than a game. It's interaction and camaraderie. It builds self-esteem, builds friendships, and it helps change lives. The Miracle League has been elected into the National Baseball Hall of Fame, the Miracle League itself. There's many major league players that support Miracle League in their fields. Most of the major league clubs also support it. There's over 19 million, the outreach, over 19 million individuals with disabilities in USA and Puerto Rico. Now I'd like to share a couple of videos regarding our field and our project. I apologize for any commercials.
With spring comes rebirth, and many of us realize a fundamental human need to-
The Southwest Michigan Miracle League has completed its field designed to be accessible for kids with special needs.
New tonight, News Eight's Kyle Mitchell shows us the site and explains the next phase of the project.
From a distance, it looks like any other baseball field, but a closer-up view of the new Miracle League field in Schoolcraft reveals this is not your typical ballpark.
It's a barrier-free environment, very safe, large openings, single surface.
Judd Hoff, the board president of the Southwest Michigan Miracle League, says the completion of the roughly $800,000 Phase 1 of the project will allow kids with special needs a chance to play.
All the benefits that sports provide kids, we want to ensure the entire community of children have that same opportunity. So in this area, there's 4,000 to 5,000 children that could have the opportunity to come out here and be a part of a team and compete.
The field is a rubberized surface that's not only safer, it's more accessible for kids in wheelchairs. Youth Board President Grace Cheatham will be one of the buddies which are paired up with each player during the game.
I think this is a great thing for Kalamazoo. I think it'll be an opportunity to bring a lot of people here and show that our community does care.
Construction began this summer, and many contractors donated their time and some materials to keep down the cost of the project. Nonprofit is hoping to field 10 teams to start the league.
We are ready to start using the field. Obviously, in the current environment with COVID being present, we're not running a league this fall. We will hope to open up and get the kids on the field in the spring.
The group is raising the remaining $200,000 for Phase 2, which will cover lighting, landscaping, and wheelchair-accessible bathrooms.
It's amazing. It's definitely one of the best things I've ever had the opportunity to do, and I'm super excited to see what the season will look like when we actually are able to get these kids on the field.
In Schoolcraft, Kyle Mitchell, News 8.
Face that is usually covered by her phone has finally made an appearance. That face-
Congratulations on your Miracle League project. Your new facility will bring joy to your community for many years to come. The partners in you, the member leagues, share a common mission with the Miracle League: to promote the fantastic endeavor of bringing the great sport of baseball to those with special needs. It's a great cause that delivers a lifetime of lasting relationships and boundless smiles. We each understand that joy and excitement should be available to all, regardless of physical limitations, age, or size. With the Miracle League, baseball is the source of this joy. Families, friends, and volunteers join the players in this love of the sport, and more importantly, people. These games become community-wide events that truly touch the hearts of each participant and observer. Every lover of baseball understands that the field, whether natural grass or the occasional synthetic, is the foundation to any game and critically important to its success. In the same way, the surface is key at Miracle League facilities. The players must be able to move across the surface unencumbered. It must be durable and aesthetically attractive, and the ball response needs to be consistent. Additionally, the surface is integral to the design and construction process, including the asphalt or concrete base, drainage system, and perimeter fencing. The Miracle League is a surfacing construction resource and is truly pleased to be able to offer member leagues three distinct surfacing types from three different partner companies at three different competitive price points. Surface America's Evertop Poured On-Site EPDM System, Landscape Structures Pebble Flex Poured On-Site Pebble System, and A-Turf's Cut &amp; Glued In Place Synthetic Turf System. Surface America's Evertop features colored EPDM rubber granules that replicate grass and dirt, while foul lines, bases, and batter boxes are permanently troweled in place, yielding a dimensionally precise, customized Miracle League baseball field. Similarly, Landscape Structures Pebble Flex System uses individual particles called pebbles, which are also mixed with a powerful urethane binder and troweled in place. The contrast in these two systems is driven by the shape and texture of the materials that form the surface. A-Turf comes in carpet-like rolls with colored fibers. Each roll and the field markings are precisely cut and adhered to the base. All portions of the field are permanent. No painting is necessary. The only maintenance with all three systems is a periodic blowing or rinsing off, keeping the surface looking new for the long haul. All three options can accommodate endless graphics and logos to further enhance the facility and are proven over many years of use in every climat type, and accompanied by generous specifications, outstanding installation craftsmanship, and industry-leading warranties backed by sound, financially-strong companies. Along with the Miracle League corporate staff, representatives from each surfacing company are available as resources that will walk you through the planning process and help you make the decision that's best for your facility. Congratulations on all of the effort your team has brought to this process. We look forward to being a valuable surfacing resource for many years to come.
Each field we have played on has had its challenges for us: inaccessibility, no fencing, no infield, challenges of sun setting on the field. So this is where we play currently, at Lower Crandall Field. This is at the start of our game at 5:45 in the evening, and that's the sun setting in left field. And as the season goes on, every night, the sun is higher and higher, and the kids are dealing with them. You can imagine children with disabilities have a hard enough time trying to hit a ball, and now they're dealing with sun in the outfield. The same night, it turned out, our field gets double booked, based on the fields in Talon, and that's another team waiting to get on our field. And there's times when we show up and there's people on our field already, and it's very confusing and nerve-wracking for the kids who are used to routine and doing everything as part of that routine. This is the design of the field that was done by our professional engineer, Todd Penny, of the Birch Grove site. It shows the Miracle Field, and we were very sensitive in regard to our field wouldn't take up the whole accessible area. And when Todd designed it, he shows that a U12 soccer field, any U8 soccer field can also be on the grassy area of Birch Grove, and this is where our Birch Grove site would be. Over here is the new school. This is a picture of the East Lime field. We're going to do a, we would like to do a combination baseball-soccer field, and as you can see, the outline of the soccer field. So the outfield fences are a little bigger than your normal Miracle League field because of the soccer field. This is pictures from the East Lime field, and we are going to use the A-Turf that was mentioned in the video. And this is, this shows you the A-Turf. Everything is painted on the field, so there's no barriers for wheelchairs or anybody tripping over. Where on the field we are now, home plates rise, the bases are raised. And this is a better picture of what the grass should be. It's a short turf field. I can hold it up. It's about 3/4 of an inch high, so it's not your normal astroturf field. There's none of the pellets inside that you'd normally have on a synthetic turf field. The cost of the surface alone would be about $180,000. It's warranted for seven years, and it's expected to last 10 to 15 years. And as part of our fundraising, we're, our fundraising plan, which we'll go over, we're looking to do one full replacement during the 10 or 15 years. We'll have the money raised to replace that field 10 or 15 years from now.
We feel the time is perfect. Three years ago, I shared our vision with Dr. Willett. The spot being prepared for the portables would be offline to the town for a few years. Fast forward past the pandemic. Investigation finds that underneath the portables is the exact subbase required for the Miracle Field. If we were able to pave over the subbase now, it would have a significant cost savings to our project of about $200,000 from starting from scratch. And that's starting from a flat area, never mind excavating wooded area. Paving and fencing that area now would allow Birch Grove to use the blacktop area for physical education and recess in September, when school reopens. The remaining area would be ceded and returned to fields for recreational use by June 2022 as contracted.
We have broken this project into four different phases. We see, and this is the cost estimate for Phase 1. Phase 1 would be leaving the area, putting up the fencing and doing an asphalt area. And Laurel and I are willing to guarantee that the cost estimate we came up with was about $80,000, and we're willing to guarantee that money to make sure that the pavement is done and is in place by the time school starts. This would allow the school to open with no delay and have the blacktop area available for games, including foursquare, hopscotch, jump rope, chalk, and kickball. Our Phase 2 would be raising the money to put over the A-Turf synthetic at a cost of $252,500. And this here would be the cost, this is the cost estimate for the whole project, which was in our proposal. Phase 3 would be fundraising for the fenced and dugouts and the scoreboard and lighting, possibly at an additional cost. And Phase 4 would be continuing to fundraise with a yearly signature fundraising event raising $15,000 to $20,000 as an annual sinking fund for field replacement and maintenance of the field and potentially adding a bathroom facility. And then, as part of our proposal, there was letters of recommendation, and I'm not going to read all these, but these are just some of the comments of some of the parents and past players in regard to how Challenger Baseball has helped and has affected their lives. So Tammy, that's the end of our presentation, so we'll stand aside for the rest of the meeting.
Sorry, thank you. I am going to remove your co-host now. And then, okay, so again, how I want to handle this. We're going to start out with Dr. Willett, Pete Staba, and the schools to go over any questions or issues that they might have or want to talk about with this. We're going to start there. Any questions that anybody has, please raise your hand, and we'll farm them to the appropriate people on here. As a reminder, we've got the schools, we've got recreation, we've got Birch Grove Building Committee, and then we have the people that have come with the Leboitzes. So I guess my first question off the top is, Dr. Willett, I don't know where you are on my page here, but if you talk, you'll pop up. But I want to try to get an idea from you on the conversations that you've had and where you guys stand in regard to the whole blacktop issue. Without having all of this funded ahead of time, there's a possibility that that could linger for a while, so I want to make sure that this is something that the schools are in line with, or what's your overall opinion on that is. And then we're going to go to Reenie.
So we've had about four Miracle Field meetings. The Leboitzes have been great. They've provided a lot of information. Todd and others have been a part of that all along. Some of the players here that were mentioned, or some of the team members here that were mentioned, have been part of those meetings. So where we've come to at this point is that conversation about the blacktop being, whether that's an obstacle or not to the school system. It's not. Talked to Chris Keith, our PE teacher today, talked to Tom Swanson and others, and they've been part of the process here. Tom has, Mr. Swanson's the Birch Grove principal. Pete Staba's been involved all along too, and he's in the virtual room here somewhere as well. But bottom line is that, if that's an asphalt, asphalt field, so to speak, or surface, we will be able to use it. So the asphalt surface isn't an obstacle. We can use it for everything that was mentioned there, foursquare and so on. We're used to, elementary schools are used to using large asphalt for surfaces for outdoor activities. And in the winter, it actually provides some additional options that we might not otherwise have. So the asphalt will work okay for the school from the standpoint that it won't be an obstacle for us really if it's done prior to the beginning.
Okay. Reenie.
Hi, I wanted to just thank you, the Leboitzes, for the presentation and just for all of the work that you've already put in. I mean, it certainly sounds amazing, and I personally love the idea of sports, fun, and inclusion. So from that regard, I think it sounds great. I do have a few questions. The first one was that they said something about blowing and spraying off. Does it need to be power wash? And if so, can it be power wash? Is it a type of surface that could be power wash? Because it seems like surfaces around here tend to need that.
Dave Putnam, could you answer that, since you guys currently have the system in place?
Yeah, absolutely. We just use a backpack blower with our maintenance guys, and probably once a month, if that, just to blow off leaves and debris that might have collected there. But you don't need to power wash it, it's just a matter of a backpack blower or a leaf blower.
But yours is pretty new, right? You're in East Lime, isn't yours pretty new? So I mean, I'm thinking five years down the road or something like that, when it starts to get a little, but you haven't heard of that?
No, not at all. Nope, I think it'll be fine. Yeah, you won't need to do any washing of anything of that. Just blow off the materials every once in a while. That's it. Yeah.
And then another question that I had, so one of the videos, it sounded like, the one in Michigan, sounded like theirs was $800,000, and then they had to raise an additional $200,000 for lights and so forth. So it sounded like it costed like a million dollars. And our estimate here is substantially less than that. Is their field different, bigger, or something? What's the reason for the difference?
I think it's bigger. I think it's maybe the obstacles that they had to come up against. I believe, Dave, East Lime, you guys did your field for about $550,000?
Yep, you are correct. Yep. But if you looked at the one in Michigan, they had a pretty extravagant entryway with a big Miracle League sign, and it looked like the dugouts were a little high-end and that kind of stuff. So ours is a little bit different than theirs. We don't have that big backstop like they had there, or the big entry and stuff. So I think that had probably something to do with the cost of it. And it depends on if you're doing prevailing wages too or not with your, how you go out to bid with the project.
So are we here in this particular one, because we're still fairly under the $550 even that East Lime spent? I mean, I guess some of it, so we're at $375, which still seems pretty light. I'm just, again, sort of wondering about those cost comparisons a little bit.
Yeah, if I can. So Todd Penny, for the record, I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut. I work for the Town of Coventry, next door as a town engineer. Been in the business for 30 years. Served on Talon's WPCA for about seven, eight years, and currently on the Wetlands Commission for the last four years or so. So it's really tough to compare one site to another site based on what the conditions are. And what we have here is about another $200,000 that is subtracted off because a lot of that work has been done. So our project is in that half a million plus, if you include all of the preparatory work that's already been done for the modular buildings. So that cost is not shown in the estimate because it's already been executed.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. But I wondered if that was part of it. But all right, I will yield to somebody else for the moment.
Okay. Lou, I have you next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lou, Lou, for the record. And I'm speaking not only as a town council member, but also as a representative of the Birch Grove Building Committee, since I'm one of the liaisons on there. And there's just a few questions that I have and a few concerns. The first one is, the biggest concern that we at the Building Committee also address is the issue of, as you said before, this had been proposed and brought forward three years ago. And for the Building Committee, we've been dealing with a lot of last-minute issues, last-minute things, and this is a significant issue that, all of a sudden, you decide in March, when the project's already been done, in literally weeks before we are at that point of actually removing the portables and replacing the turf that was taken away. Why it took this long to, and why at the last minute, this is being brought forward now? That's the first question. There's a few more that I have to follow on.
Okay, our committee started meeting three years ago. We have, it took us a while to get going. We evaluated sites. We had a meeting with the rec department. Then the pandemic hit. We never heard back from the rec department, and with everybody working remotely and everything else, we just, it seemed like the world lost a year. And that's really what happened. And we didn't know what the contract was with the construction company, the timing of it, the change order and that type of thing. So we approached Dr. Willett on March 1st, when we thought we had all our ducks in a row. And so it was really the pandemic and being able to get everybody together and the resources. And we sort of just, we had the meeting with the rec department, and then we sort of got left hanging.
Okay. And has there been any fundraising done to this point? Do you have any funds available to move forward with? I mean, you're talking about paving over the spot where the portables are now. Do you have funding available for that?
Yes, we do. Laurel and I are committing, at the cost of $80,000, we're committing our own funds out of our personal finances and borrowing in order to ensure that happens. And then we'll, so the school board and the Building Committee are not left with a not usable area, and then we're going to fundraise that $80,000 in addition to the rest of the project. But we're willing to come in and write a check today for $80,000.
So you're doing that personally, basically a personal donation to cover that $80,000 to have it paved over?
Correct.
Okay, because that was one of my main concerns, is where we're going to have an open lot there that's not usable. And that if this is something, the ultimate concern is, is that if there's not fundraising done, and you don't have enough to get them to build the field itself, that right now, that the state is obligated by contract, and the town is obligated through that same contract, that they will, that the state will pay 100% of the cost to return where the portables were to a usable sports field with the grading and everything else, $400,000. And if that's not something, so if that's something that if this isn't done, we're now faced with either another parking lot area, blacktop area, or if we want to turn it to a usable field, so we have two usable fields, $400,000 out of pocket. And that's something, that's a significant thing that is weighing on my mind very heavily as far as a town council member, but also as a Building Committee member, where right now, if we were to change anything, that it's not a matter of just a simple change order. This is a contractual obligation, and then we have to go to the state, because you're also looking at not only using part of the field to pave over, but then you're also looking to have another part of it return to grass. Is that correct?
Right, that's correct. And we have faith in the Town of Talon, Talon's an inclusive community- And we have faith and, you know, we have faith in the town of Tallinn and Tallinn's an inclusive community. They built an Adams Adventure Playground. And we feel that this is a project that the town would rally behind. We have the Lions Club behind us. We have, we've been in discussions with Liberty Bank and their foundation. We've been in discussions with Berkshire Bank and their foundation where and, you know, and I think it's would be a great asset for Tallinn. They already have the Adams Adventure. I know that Miracle League is only looking to allow four or five fields in town. I'm sorry, in the state of Connecticut. And we feel that, you know, that'll be a feather in the cap of the of the town. And we feel very confident, you know, because we were involved in the Adams Adventure. And and some of the our committee members are also former Adams Adventure Board members.
Well, so
just to kind of, hold on, Lou, just to kind of interject there a little bit. Concern of mine with that is it took us years to do Adams Adventure. It was not like a quick turnaround. It was over a long period of time before we had all the money to do Adams Adventure. And it was significantly less than half a million. So or 300, 252 plus the 80, that 252 doesn't include the 80, correct? That you would need to raise to refund yourself, right?
Right, the total, we're projecting the total cost of about 370,000.
Okay.
And I mean, and then that's, that's another thing where my next question was going to be is, did you get, you know, and did you, did you get the Miracle Foundation to buy into this? Have you gotten, since you said that they're only looking at doing five or five or so around the state? Have they have they endorsed this project?
They have. We've been in conversations with Miracle League of Connecticut. And they're willing to offer matching funds up to $25,000 toward our project. So we've had conversations with them already and they're on board with it.
Okay. And then, I mean, on the last one, because again, I'll circle back around on on other questions I have, but I don't want to tie up the entire time since I see there's other people with questions is now the organization that's that's in charge of the fundraising. Is this a 501(c)(3)? Okay.
Yes, it is. And we haven't made up, we can go under Miracle League of Connecticut. Right now, we're going under the Town Athletic Foundation, which is a foundation that started that's
So so but so you've got authorization to do that through the through the town to use F, use the Athletic Foundation or?
I started the Town Athletic Foundation.
Okay, so
President of it. And we've been dormant for years because the high school basically, you know, we raised money and then there was no need for us to raise money anymore. So we, you know, I've kept it going, but we, you know, we're not actively, you know, not actively raising money for the Tallinn High School anymore.
Okay. And then I'm sorry, just one piggyback on that is for the maintenance. And I know that we've asked a few different times, but you said before that your your planning, including this estimate, is getting enough money for one full replacement of the of the top?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's included in the $378,000?
No, it's in addition to that. We're going to fundraise that. We're going to raise 15 to 20,000 annually for the next 10 years for sinking fund of that for that. And to have that money in place and we're some of our 15 or 20,000 would also go for the maintenance. We would like this project to be no zero cost to the town of Tallinn.
Okay. Because the main concern that I have based upon that is also the same thing was sort of said for the turf at the high school. And now the town is looking at having to bear the burden of replacing that turf. And that's, that's something that was, you know, we heard the same thing years ago when the turf was being put in. And now there's nothing and the town is faced with having to replace the entire turf out of its pocket. So
And, you know, Laurel and I are willing to, you know, commit to the fundraising. And if there's fundraising shortage, we're willing personally to make up the shortfall.
Okay. All right, that, Madam, Madam Chair, that's all I have at this point. I'm going to circle back around with other questions after everyone's done. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Next, I've got Steve.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, one quick question. So just to clarify, I think this is through you to Leewitzes. Did you say it was an A turf? That was the partner that was decided upon?
Right, an A turf, three quarters inch turf.
Okay, and so through you, I'm chair to, I believe they're probably Pete's or Scott. Is that a field turf comparable to what's used at the high school? Or is it a different one, but comparable in terms of maintenance and regular overseeing its use?
Pete, would you happen to know that? Or Bruce, I don't, I don't know that you have a whole lot to do with the turf field up there. But would Pete or Bruce have an answer to that?
Yeah, Steve, it's a totally different surface. It would be like the fabric of the turf field without the crushed rubber that's actually up in it. It's actually a little bit thicker so that you don't have the substrate that actually penetrates through that surface. You don't have some of the impacts, attenuation that you would have without the rubber there. But we're not really worried about it in this case because, you know, we're not playing a a high school soccer game there or a high school football game there. You probably actually have a little bit less maintenance. You don't have really the grooming that you would have with the rubber pellets and and, you know, trying to, in essence, infill spots where, you know, you get lead out from display and use areas. So it's probably actually a little bit less maintenance than you would have on the current, the current high school field.
Great, thank you. And to continue the questioning about the maintenance through Madam Chair, Pete, would this fall under? If it went through and went through the entire process, would this fall under the same agreement that I believe we're discussing actually tomorrow night as a part of kind of the town council, Board of Education, make field maintenance agreements?
I think what you would find, Steve, is because of the fact that you're going to see people like the gym teacher recess folks use that field during school that probably most of my staff would deal with the general maintenance of that field. The town and the Board of Ed are are connected in regards to capital plans. So, you know, we would have to decide, you know, 10, 15 years, if it's time to change that again. That would have to go on a joint, a joint cap capital plan. But I think you would probably probably see most of my staff do most of the maintenance.
Okay. And in terms of the use, I know the presenters mentioned the use of outside organizations. So in that case, would that limit the ability of those outside organizations like veterans groups to utilize it? Or only or or would they be able to go through the school to rent the field on weekends that aren't being used by the Miracle League?
Absolutely, you know, Miracle
Hold on, hold on one second, please. So Pete, is that that would be, I'm assuming it would be similar to what we would have for an agreement with the turf field at the high school?
Yeah, I think what we would have to look at with with that is if there's cleanup involved afterwards, we'd have to look like, you know, maybe usage could go through Bruce, Bruce Watt in his office for outsiders. And then if we have to, you know, have a custodian there to, you know, close up the gate or something like that, we could probably have that function similar in that way. I, the biggest concern that we have with building use, when we look at outside uses, it's it's just cleanup afterwards, really. When it comes to trash and other things.
Cleanup and as Steve mentioned, I think scheduling and Bruce, I did want to ask you about that, but I'll wait. But Steve, do you have a, do you want me to loop that in with what you just asked? Or do you want to?
Yeah, just go ahead because that was going to be my next question in terms of the scheduling. And then I think, you know, we've kind of talked about if it's going to be for free or if it's a potential revenue generator or if those funds could possibly be used to help continue funding phases or maintenance. If the field is rented, you said you could have people say, make a donation for the rental use and say that goes towards the continued maintenance or something of that sort. That was kind of one avenue I wanted to have fleshed out.
Right. And I would see that again. Um, Bruce, if you, if you can unmute yourself, I'm wondering from the perspective of us renting out the turf field at the high school, how this is going to impact you from a scheduling perspective? Because once this field is made, it is on town property and it does become a town asset. And we are going to have to handle the scheduling through what I would assume is just a regular the regular maintenance that we do right now with the turf field. So can you talk to that maybe?
Sure. First, I'd like to go on the record, though, I don't think the rec department is at fault for just now hearing about this Birch Grove project. I think we had a lot of discussion on different sites. And when Birch Grove was brought up, it was suggested to talk to the Board of Ed since it was Board of Ed property. But I wouldn't put that full blame on the Recreation Department. As for the scheduling, the scheduling wouldn't be that big of an issue with the software that we had implemented when I came on board. I have all our facilities listed within the system. Anyone from the outside can actually go in and see what is, what and who is using specific fields here in town. So it really would just be in putting the field into our system and then having some kind of obviously fee and rules and regulations that are going to go along with the rental. I would say with the rental of the turf field, you know, that money does go into a fund for specifically the turf field. But I believe a lot of that money is used toward paying down the the note since the fundraising kind of laxed for the payment of the turf field.
Okay, so you're basically saying this as it would go online as a regular field, like the turf field. We you're going to have the need to maintain the scheduling of the Tallinn because you have like tallon soccer, we have top soccer. We've got challenger sports was mentioned that it can be used for U6 soccer, T-ball, plus the miracle field usage.
And and basically, those schedules, what I get, let's for like top soccer, Tallinn use soccer will give me the fields that they need. And that would include a field for the tops. And they would internally schedule the specific use for that field, if that makes sense. I'll know that Tallinn Soccer is on, let's say, lower cross farms, but I won't know if it's a U12 or U8 type thing. That's all done in-house within the specific sports, which I would assume with the baseball leagues as well. I get a kind of like a blanket, if you will, blanket schedule. Town Little League needs X, Y, and Z fields and, you know, from this date to that date for these times. Those will be put in there listed as Town Little League.
Okay, does that answer your question, Steve?
Yeah, and then I just have, I think, two more and then I'll I'll yield to other people. So the next question, I think Pete's probably have already answered it. So through you to Pete, the seven year warranty for the field, would that warranty fall under your cognizance once the field is completed or would it fall under another organization? Say if there was some incident that occurred that you could make a claim to the warranty, who would be responsible for going through that process?
Pete?
Yeah, I guess
Pages and pages of people, I can't find everybody.
Yeah, I would have to assume that warranty is on just the surface. That will not cover any fencing or anything like that or drainage or things of that sort. I think if it's a vandalism issue, I mean, obviously it becomes an insurance claim. If it's a manufact factual problem, I think I would have to probably work with Steve and his group to look at the maker of the product there. But in his estimates of 10 to 15 years of useful life, I'd probably plan, I would split the difference there in the two. And then if I'm Steve and Laurel, I'm thinking about, you know, year 10 to 12, I should should have my funds there possibly for for that first, that first go up, that first replacement. But I think like with with everything, we would have to, you know, look at, you know, cause, cause of that issue. The thought is to, you know, we are going to have some surveillance in that area in the playground and so on in there. So we will have some offshoots of coverage, being able to see folks going on there. Probably within the first year or so, Birch Grove being set up. So, you know, we are somewhat covered in that area.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question, and then I'll yield is, this actually might be able to answer through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Penny, who was the engineer. I think that provided some of the design outlines that are on page, I believe, eight of the document that's in our special meeting packet. I was just curious. So I guess the first question is, so phase one restores allows the allows the motto or allows the group to restore that U12 and U8 soccer fields that are kind of that shaded green, the two kind of squares or rectangles?
That's correct. I mean, the rect, you know, the field itself, the miracle field itself is roughly 176 by 166. But obviously you have an outfield that's an arc. The field itself would be left for gravel and then the entire area inside of the Loop Road would be restored to grass. So this plan is an earlier plan and then I have another plan that just shows it all grass. So I mean, that would be the scope of work is just taking the miracle field quadrant, if you will, if you look at that and you say, okay, we've got, you know, north is up, kind of taking that southeast quadrant of the of the field and making that or dedicating that to the miracle field area.
Okay, and do you know, just based on the dimensions, what percentage of that space is the miracle field versus the remainder being restored to its original or prior use?
I do. I had come up with a percentage a while ago. I'd have to try to find that and if you give me a couple of minutes, I
We can go to other people and if you happen to raise it, you can provide the information at a later time.
I mean, so I mean, just, just real quick. So I did do an area. The total area of restoration, which is the inside of the Ring Road is about 120,000 square feet. And we're about 23,000, 24,000, so one fifth.
Okay. So then 80% essentially or roughly 80% of that area could be restored or feasibly re-restored to those other use is give or take.
Yeah, those were my numbers back in March. Maybe they've changed a little bit because of our conversation, site meeting, the board. I mean, the town wants to keep a portion of that ring road to have a track now. So I mean, you you want to say 25%? I think you want to give me 5% either way. I think that's pretty close.
Okay. That covers it for me, Madam Chair. Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's see, that gets us to Kurt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my first question would be directed to someone on the Birch Grove Building Committee. The area that was highlighted by Mr. Penny showing the miracle field, the U8 soccer field and U12 soccer field. What in the current plans, what is scheduled to be put there? What fields and does anybody know?
I don't know, Katie, if you're on, if you want to take that or?
Is it okay?
Yeah, go ahead, Katie.
Thank you. The contract that we have is for field restoration. So that entire, right now, the town is under contract with the the major contractor who's out there, D'Amato, to remove the modulars and restore the field to grass. So I do not believe our contract includes any striping. I can go back and check, but essentially the plan, if nothing else changes, would be to restore that entire field to grass. There will be a fence again, where we're trying to restore that field to the original condition it was in before the modulars went in, taking advantage of any enhancements or improvements that have been made.
Understand.
So Katie, I'm sorry, Kurt, I'm going to interrupt you there for a second. From the perspective of the restore it to grass piece, they would be pulling up the subflooring that is there right now to do that, correct?
Yes, the plan is to remove the sub, the sub material underneath the modulars. Apparently there's some sort of insulation there as well. So they're going to remove all that and they have been stockpiling the topsoil. So the topsoil will be basically trucked back up that little hill. They're going to hydro seed the whole thing and there's a warranty period on the grass.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Kurt, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So my next question gets into the fundraising portion of this. Obviously, the proposed $270,000 to the proposed two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to uh rate that would need to be raised um substantial. Um, has there been considerations to uh naming, naming rights of the field?
There has. Um, I know Steve Herbert um works for um Liberty Bank. Steve, in your conversations with Liberty Bank, you know, has that come up in a conversation?
Yeah, I um, I'm dealing with the Liberty Bank Foundation as well as some other banks, foundations, and um, that is one of the ideas I'm gonna run by a naming rights to the field. I think um s- some of the large companies we could pitch, possibly Liberty Bank. Um, so I have more, I have some meetings scheduled. Um, I I have the initial plans run by them, so that's a possibility of the naming rights to the field. It's a very strong possibility.
Okay, uh, before we go ahead with that, Steve, um, we definitely, I know Rick Conti is on, we would have to discuss that because it is town-owned property. I don't know that we can name town-owned property, especially on a school. So there's legal considerations that we would have to take into um effect with that. So Rick, I see you just unmuted. I don't know if you wanna jump in on that one quickly.
So, uh, Tammy, I am uh writing questions uh as the meeting goes on. That's the third one that I've read.
Great minds.
Uh, how about a sign with sponsors, like sponsors for the field, a big sign?
Um, I I don't know. I I know we had that up at the turf field at the high school. So I think like sponsorship signs on a fence, I think, are doable, but um I don't know about naming a field. We're gonna have to take that one away and look at that. Um, go ahead, Kurt.
Uh, thank you. Um, so that and then I guess my next question would again have to kind of do with echoing some counsel, Councilman Louva's statements on uh timing. Um, I was present in February of twenty twenty when there was a presentation given to the Parks and Recreation Department regarding um this field. Uh, from my recollection, it seemed that this project was proposed to be heavily or heavily was designed um to be slotted in at cross farms. Um, that was at least what was presented to us at the time. Maybe there was other locations that I have uh have slipped my memory. Um, so and again, I mean, when I look at the timeline, March tenth of twenty twenty-one, here we are. You know, when I were having a special meeting to in in the end of May, three months before the school is supposed to open and I I'm highly concerned with this timeline, um, with the fundraising timeline, with the out, which what's needed. Um, from the state considerations, from our considerations, the lack of in cash capital from this group, um, you know, that yeah, I wholeheartedly support the project. Um, my my main, I wish we had more time. This is really what I'm trying to get at and uh I really, really wish we had more time. So um, I don't, I know you've already discussed why a little bit, so you don't have to answer that if you don't wish to. Um, that's all the questions I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, that means next I have Sophia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, a lot of what um was said tonight, I already had on my list, so I was able to cross some things off. Um, I have a an elder son who is now almost in his thirties and he was a challenger athlete for many years, and this is the first that I've heard of a miracle field. Um, he had the the privilege to pay on the regular fields that we have available. So like, I look at this as a huge opportunity that I can see taking trend with providing a safer environment um for children with um those needs that need to be addressed. Um, but my question is just regarding, of course, with me being new and to listening in on everyone else's expert opinion, is that if there was a feasibility study um conducted in order to address a needs assessment and the financial obligations after for for installing this field. Um, needs, of course, with on mentioning that different organizations or different towns may be able to gain access would, you know, kind of moot the point of having a needs assessment. But with the feasibility study, usually they take a few years. And I would think that, you know, with the way that we have the planning phases now and jumping into a capital project without having any type of guaranteed funds to support it, and it's only a ten-year um warranty. It just has a a lot of different questions that I would have and would like to be able to explore and have answered after, you know, reaching out to different experts. But mainly, um, will there be a request for proposals for the field? Like, is this um a proprietary type of thing? Or is it something where you can look toward getting different companies that may be able to come in and provide the installation at a le- um cheaper cost or less? And if the state, um, based on what I understand with Lou mentioned is that the state had already guaranteed funds for a specific plan? Would the state be amenable to changing the the plan and still meet what they've already agreed to in order to support installing this field? Because I don't know if there's a different set of liability. Like, these are all things and questions that I would have and want to, you know, research all of the opinions and all of the information given back and not having the time to review that is something that, of course, you know, being behind such a wonderful project is, you know, the heart goes into it. But then the head starts to ask different questions and I don't know if we've had enough time to figure all of this out in the the limited time that we have for a project that is just ready to start to do a change of plans. So again, so my, to be more specific, how long was the feasibility of this project? How much time was went into figuring out if it would work? Um, if there would be, um, is it a proprietary type of installation or can we do a request for proposals? And of course, how many athletes do we have in Tallinn that would um benefit greatly from having um this miracle field installed? And if the miracle league would be willing to provide a letter of intent in order to, you know, make things, you know, have a more, you know, make me more rest assured that there will be a an organization outside of tax funds in order to support this um this project. Thank you. And that's open for whomever would be best suited to answer.
Um, okay, so let's start with the feasibility and um that, um, I'm assuming Steve and Laurel, um, you would probably be closest to that.
Right, we we have athletes from um many different surrounding towns this year with the pandemic and the restrictions with COVID. We have twenty players. Um, I'm not sure how many, um, Jeff Jeff did have top soccer in the fall. I'm not sure how many he's had. We've never, you know, we have players from other towns. We've never actively advertised it to other towns. You know, we we've sort of had enough players, you know, to to fill our rosters in order for what we're trying to do. Um, you know, our ma- our main thing with the Birch Grove site was the subbase. And um, we we weren't aware until um, as we got through our process that this subbase would match up exactly with what we were looking to do until, you know, until we we sort of peel back the onion and researched it. You know, we apologize um for the short timeframe. Um.
It it, Steve, Steve, can I just interject a little bit on feasibility? So let's rewind. We got together, uh, we, the the building commit or the committee that Steve and Laurel uh fostered. Um, and my charge for that committee early on back in the summer of nineteen was to look at area sites that would be feasible for um and look at the pros and cons to each of those fields. So we we looked at the Birch Grove site, given uh its conversion for modular um and the use for the modular uh buildings. We also lurked, looked at the lower Crandall site where we are now, okay, and building that new miracle field. Uh, we looked at the upper Crandall where top soccer is now. And then we also looked at the woods adjacent to Adam's Adventure, and that's the conversation that I think Kurt had talked about. Kurt was at that um rec uh meeting uh back in February of twenty twenty just prior to pandemic hitting the fan. Um, and and that is where the ball kind of got dropped, Kurt, is is af- you know, that happened and we and we kind of that, we we lost a year, all right? So you you know, Steve and Laurel got this committee going within the last two years. You know, I've certainly been involved in the last two years. They've probably been looking at this for the last thirty years since they've been doing challenger baseball. So those four sites that I just talked about, five, um, each of them had their pros. Each of them had their cons. Um, being close to Adam's Adventure um would have been a pro for that um challenger field, miracle field. But the construction costs were three times the cost because you had the wooded area. You've got to fill the area. There's wetlands. So was there a formal feasibility report that I did? No. Uh, but we kind of, we kind of went through the pros and cons and we ultimately said, we like we 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 like cross farms, um, but ultimately we wanted money is always the bottom line with projects of these natures. And so we figured with the cost savings at Birch Grove, that's where we decided to go into and all of the accessible features already incorporated into that site. Uh, it it was, it's a win-win. Um, it's not right next to Adam's Adventure, but it's near it. So that that's kind of the genesis of the other sites that we looked at. Um, and the feasibility of it, yeah, there's not a formal report that you're looking at and you're getting my testimony and you're getting Stephen Laurel's testimony. And right, we do have a time crunch.
Well, with um the the reason why I brought up feasibility is that with it being a public asset, then the feasibility, the study would have to be presented to the public. Um, we can all, you know, Tallanders are amazing. I say that over and over again, and I could, you know, reasonably assume that we would, you know, all taxpayers or, you know, constituents here would get behind the project. Was there enough time to introduce the project to the the community? Um, let the community know that, you know, what the 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 different um options that we have um with um looking to do and commit to fifteen thousand dollars a year for fundraising over the next five years. Putting the project on hold essentially, and this is like I said, just with with regard to feasibility, by putting the project on hold for any kind of site, any kind of advantageous site would still, could still result in five years of doing that fundraising. So at least have the cash guaranteed. Right now, we have the eighty thousand, you know, that is looked to be personally funded and that's outstanding. Like, I've never, you know, this is a remarkable thing to acknowledge, but just with it being a capital project that involves, you know, public assets, then all of this information, you know, being held in a special meeting, it just kind of puts the community at a disadvantage to be able to weigh in, so to speak, as they would with a referendum. So and then, of course, with a request for proposals, are there other companies out there? Like, do we already have one company that's earmarked to do it because it's a proprietary thing that's only available to a limited amount of, you know, contractors? Or is this something that can be, you know, brought to the attention of other people, like minority-owned businesses that might be able to install the field as well? So with with all of that being said, of course, this this is something that I would say as a child, again, I have, I'm a mother of a son that was a challenger athlete and coming home with the bumps and bruises wasn't the same. It was the owl, the the scratching, the not wanting to participate because it wasn't the best, you know, environment to provide needs for the challenger athlete. I think this is incredible, but just the timing, you know, for me being here to twenty twenty-one, the pandemic, you know, truncating the the process, the information not being made available to the public in order to weigh in on it. I can easily assume that if it were on referendum, that the public would say, absolutely. This is something that we'd be willing to flip the bill for, especially with the reduced cost. But just with not, you know, this this special meeting isn't going to have as much of a reach to the other, you know, constituents in the community to be able to throw their support behind. Not just that, I saw that there was an article in the Journal Inquirer and the opinion of any other board member, any any other party of interest wasn't reached out to. So my thing, like I said, again, if there was feasibility and with, you know, all due respect to your professional opinion, that would still be something that would have to be presented to the public in a timely fashion to allow for them to decide whether they want a miracle field installed or if they want roads fixed over the next course of the next ten years. So and again, if it's something where there's going to be fundraising that is going to be relied on, we have to be able to know that that is a attainable goal to to be able to say fifteen thousand, we can get that. So I, you know, I don't want to keep going on and on and again with the state being committed to doing one thing. Is the state amenable to changing that to include, you know, whatever else is added? Like, it just, whether or not we've had enough time to explore all of these different changes within a time that we're looking to break ground right now and then change everything all of a sudden, maybe looking to fundraise while we get the plan going could be something that could be looked at. Like, does it have to be right now, this project, just because of a cost savings? When the public didn't really have enough time to engage, you know what I mean? So like I said again, I would love it. I think it's an amazing thing. It's an amazing custom that I didn't even know about until I got the information for the special meeting. When I started to do my research, I couldn't find out, and I couldn't even find if a miracle field is something that could be installed installed by any contractor if it's proprietary. So I didn't, uh, you know, with what I had available, seems amazing, but I would like to have been able to do more research and find out how we can have this meet the needs of the community, meet the needs of the taxpayer and then meet the needs on the long term with regard to how we would maintain and things like that. So I'm sorry, I don't want to go on and take too much time from anyone else. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may address one of the questions that was brought up by uh uh by Miss Johnson. Uh, regarding the uh regarding the uh the state and uh uh Katie, our chair for the Birch Grove Building Committee is on here, so she can answer or correct me if I'm wrong. That based upon our discussions, that the the state is not, I mean, that that's something that would require a contract amendment, which is a lot of different issues, and there's no way that that could be done within this short period of time. Um, I mean, but what, Katie, what 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 are your experiences on that?
My, um, when I talked to the miracle field people, um, I expressed my uh opinion that the money that the state had already committed to to restore that field could not be used for anything else. So um if this project were to move forward as planned, uh, the miracle field people would have to have a separate contract with D'Amato. Um, and while D'Amato is doing the field restoration work on the rest of the field, uh, they would be doing the contracted work between the miracle field people and um getting that, doing the preparation work for that. No state dollars would be diverted into this project. And there is a minor uh in terms of uh the adjustment in the work D'Amato would have to do with the field uh does result in a minor cost savings. Um, I think it's under five thousand dollars. And that money would have to be, uh, the state are has already paid Tallinn for the work that that is planned to be done. So we would have to return that money to the state. It would not be uh used for this miracle field. So there is no uh state money. There's no money for this project, for the Birch Grove project going to miracle field.
And do we have any letters of intent from the miracle league? Because um, having conversations, not that I doubt that they they've been conducted and that they are in good faith. I would still think that we should have a letter of intent in order to obligate them to any well intentions that they've expressed. And a letter of intent, if they can say, okay, we can get one for you tomorrow. That's something that I didn't see included in the packet where any letters of intent for commitment and fundraising is, you know, touch and go. We have um a beautiful park that we're doing for our seniors right now and we're short a, you know, a few thousand dollars and we're actually like trying to push to get that money raised. So, you know, without knowing that there is some kind of, we have a projection that's not based on an actual. And that's the only thing that I have. If we have a projection for how much money we can raise, what are the actual monies that have been raised and outside of a um, the the Levowitzes, I hope I pronounced it correctly, that they've committed, we have to make sure that we can get that fifteen thousand every year. And if there's a shortfall, where would that come from? So it's just like I said, with the feasibility, definitely with the financial obligation is something that I would like for us to. Is something that I would like for us to be able to invest more time into and at least have a little bit more money in the coffer. For this additional direction that we look to go in. And again, it's an amazing direction, but are we looking to veer off? Into a new direction without having enough time allotted to ensure that this is something that we can afford, something that is desired and something that we should do. I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Katie, um, back to what you were saying there. So if I heard you correctly. What we would be required to do is a, a change order that would result in a five thousand dollar refund. Um, back to the state because Damato would not be pulling up the sub flooring. I'm just going to call it some flooring for now and all of the stuff underneath, um. That would result in a five thousand dollar savings that would go back to the state and then the approximate eighty thousand dollars. Um, would be the cost to because I'm assuming we wouldn't have the fence around that same area. So it's going to be slightly different. So that change order that all that, anything else from that point on would be an existing contract with Damato, correct? Or a new contract with Damato?
Yeah, I think, um, the miracle field people can probably speak to that better than I could, but my understanding is from the project point of view, there would be a change order that would result in a credit. Um, and that credit would go back to the state. Because they prepaid a hundred percent of that work already.
Right, right. But the whole cost of the whole, um, the whole Yeah, it was included in that. Okay. Yep. That was my understanding also. Thank you for confirming that. Um, Lou, did you have another question?
Uh, I think that there was a, that a, uh, Ms. Felucy had a, had her hand up before.
She did, but you were in the midst of a question, so I wasn't sure if, if you were, if that answered your question totally.
Oh, no, I was just providing information, uh, from Ms. Johnson regarding the, uh, uh, and that the, uh, and that the overall cost for the field. I mean, for the, that, uh, the overall money that we have from the state is four hundred thousand dollars, which is to replace the entire field. Back to the original condition. So it, then it's a question of a modification of the contract for, uh, to, to see, to see, well, first off, to see if they'd be willing to modify the contract to, uh, cut out that, that section. And then, uh, and then amend the, uh, and repair the rest of the field. But that's, I'll, I'll address that during my, during my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Brenda, you're next.
You're on mute. When you move my screen, I can't find myself. All right. So thank you. Um. First I want, am I still muted? No. Okay.
Nope, you're good.
So first I, I want to say thank you to the Leboitzes, um, to Mr. Penny. And for everybody who's been on your committees, working on this for the past few years. Your, um, commitment to our community is obvious. Um, you guys, you all are truly gems and, um, assets to Talend and I really, really appreciate everything you've done. Um, you've shown that you have, um, dedicated investments into our community, um, with your time and with your money. Um, our, our town would not be as beautiful as it is without people like you in it. So thank you all. Um. It really takes some great leadership and you guys are all leaders to take advantage of the opportunities that we have in front of us. Um, to be able to see that there, there's an opportunity here to take advantage of what's happening at Birch Grove and create a more inclusive. Area for all of our, um. Young, um, athletes to be involved in is, is truly amazing. Um. My, my major concern here is ensuring that we find a ways that all of our athletes have opportunities to participate. I want every parent that wants to be a soccer mom or a baseball mom or dad. Um, to be able to have that opportunity and you're giving that to many more families, both in Talend and in our surrounding areas. Um, from my understanding and from everything that's been provided so far. Um, we have challenges that, that need to be addressed and this looks like to me, I'm so excited because it looks like it's addressing a lot of the challenges. I, I'm hoping that, um, Stephen Laurel can talk a little bit about accessibility to the field at Birch Grove because I'm having trouble understanding, I, I couldn't read. Um, about parking and getting access to the miracle field. So I just wanted to ensure that was much easier than what's happening right now from my understanding. So that's one question. Um.
So Brenda, do you want to pause so they can answer or do you want to? Okay, how about we do that? Cause I lost track of how many questions Sophia had, so I definitely maybe it'll be easier. Um, Stephen Laurel, can you answer that question please from Brenda about accessibility to the field?
You wrote a tremendous letter, um, in, in support of the project in that regard. Would you mind answering that question for us?
Kicking it over to Pete now.
Thanks guys. Yeah, my, uh, my letter was just kind of, uh, doing a, uh, a review of the assessment of sites that, that Talend currently has. Um, I kind of thought about, uh, the various school sites. I thought about cross farms. I thought about Crandall. I thought about Heron Cove even. Um, and when you think about all the sites, uh, the one thing that came to mind with Birch Grove, uh, especially once we decided to keep the access road. That, uh, basically will, um, circle the whole grass soccer field area. Um, as well as the accessible parking spots that are there now currently for the portables. And coupled with the work that we're doing to integrate the playground features as well as the rotary on the new school. Design, you have two separate sidewalks that are going to lead to the, uh, miracle field entrance area. Uh, that meet the slope on grade for folks in wheelchairs and so on. Uh, you have upwards that campus counting the FRC side. Somewhere around a hundred and sixty-three parking spots, which is about twenty more than the old school had. Uh, you have close to thirty to forty parking spots at least that are in the rotary area as well as the parking spots near the main office portion of the current portables that are all wheelchair accessible. Uh, the building committee did approve a, um, uh, a paved entrance from Rhodes Road, uh, last, last week. That's currently gravel. That will be gated on the Rhodes roadside and there will be a separate gate on the access road that goes from the current portables to the new parking lots. Uh, so, uh, to prevent vehicle traffic from driving onto that miracle field or even the grass field. Um, so it really is one of the most conducive sites for parking that we have in grade as far as access to that area. Uh, we don't have to drop chains to allow wheelchairs to get down there like we do at the turf field at the high school. Uh, you've only got a couple of parking spots down at the softball, baseball field that meets the current code. Um, the turf field is a beautiful field at the high school. It's conducive for uh, wheelchair viewing, uh, not as conducive to players trying to get out there. Um, they need to be led down there. Uh, the current sidewalk that goes to the left of the generator does, does not meet code. Um, and they have to go down the long way to get down to that field. So when I thought about sites, this really from a construction perspective made, made, made the most sense. One of the reasons why, and, and that's the prime, the primary reason from a construction perspective that up against a challenge timeline that we should possibly consider just because of the fact that that site is probably the best one that we have. And if we consider others, um, we'll look to spend a lot more money. And, uh, you probably won't necessarily give the same value for your dollars there. Um, so I, I spent some time to think, thinking about this, um, you know, um, and, uh, I think it's a win-win. Um, it's just a matter of how we all end up funding it. And, and I think that's really what it ends up coming down, 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 down to there. So. But, um. Yeah, I, I guess that answers your, your, uh, question.
Yes, you did. Um, Brenda, your, go ahead. Your next question.
Yep, um, so I was, I, I don't have the privilege of, of having, um, a child involved in these programs or even having a buddy involved in these programs. So I was hoping if you could just, um, that maybe the Leboitzes can take a moment just to fill me in on like how many practices a week happen for, um, either of these two sports, the baseball and the soccer and how many games happen and maybe how long your season is? Just so we can get an understanding of, uh, you know, how typically the, um, fields are used.
We, um, we play on Tuesdays and Thursdays. I'm not sure Jeff Gallagher could probably speak to top soccer. We might expand it. We've, um, we basically, well, the way we run it is a little like a sandlot, um. For those of you that were in great neighborhoods and a bunch of kids would get together and you'd choose up teams and go. Because of the, um, disadvantages that the fields we use. We have not, there are other teams that we could invite to come play us, but we, 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 we basically haven't. Um, where wheelchairs can't get up there with the sun setting in the outfield. Where the, the road is right on a road. We've had players in the past that were runners. And, and actually on the first baseline, there's not much between those benches and the road. And you know, and, and, and all our kids have different, different challenges. When we were up at Heron Cove. One of our biggest problems was where kids running down toward the river, if you can imagine all the railroad tracks. And you go, a- a- and that was kind of scary. So we, we basically play on Tuesdays and Thursdays. I believe top soccer is once during the week. And, and, and once on weekend.
Weekend. Well, it was, I, I'm speaking from past years' experience with my kids. I believe they did, uh, they, they were buddies. They did the one during the week and then on the weekend game, but I see we have, uh, a talk town soccer. I see it. It says Kaylee. I'm pretty sure you're not Kaylee, but I think that's Dave there. If you want to maybe comment on top soccer, if it's still one, one, uh, one practice during the week and then games on the weekend.
Yes, uh, thanks, uh, Tammy. So I, I appreciate you calling on me and yes, uh, so it is David Garrett, not Kaylee Garrett. Daughter was commandeered by Zoom, um, but I am president of the
You're lucky she didn't make you look like a cat.
Well, she might before the end of this conversation. Um, but, but before I comment on the specifics of top sock, right? I, I just do want to clear up a few things for record because I've seen it published not only in the packet here, uh, for tonight, but I, I'm very shocked to see it in the general inquiry. And as of this point, the Talend Soccer Club is not taking a position for or against this project. Um, we're just learning about it. Uh, we're trying to understand the, the feasibility. So I am a little concerned when, you know, there's, there's published reports that top soccer is going to use this field. Um, we would certainly need to understand quite a bit more, uh, about the project. Um, as far as the, the specifics about top soccer. Um. So as previously mentioned, we do currently, uh, practice on Wednesday evenings, uh, as well as Saturday mornings. Uh, starting this past fall, we actually moved the program to the turf field that, uh, Talend High School. It has been tremendous. Um, you know, as, as Pete mentioned, there is, you know, handicap accessibility down to the field on the path. Uh, we have kids in wheelchairs and, and crutches and all sorts of implements and, uh, it, it works fantastic there. Um, our schedule in the, in the fall is we practice on Wednesday evenings. Um, and you know, as I'm sure most of you can appreciate in the fall, there's, you know, significant challenges with, you know, shorter and shorter days. Um, so again, one of the great things about being at the high school is we, you know, we have the lights and, and that works very well for us. Uh, we also practice, uh, on Saturday mornings. So that is our, our current schedule.
I thought so. You guys haven't changed any in the last like decade, but.
Day, we changed from Tuesday evenings to Wednesday evenings. Uh, you would hear the, the better fit actually Jeff scheduled. Um, and i- if I could Tammy, just a, a couple of other clarifications. And again, I apologize because I'm just seeing this package for the, the first time, but, um, just dimensionally, a couple of things here. Uh, on this, this site plan, um, one where it lists U twelve soccer. Unfortunately, that field is undersized. Uh, and we could never use that for U twelve. Um, and the other thing, and again, I, I'm doing the math here based on the site drawings, but, um. The, the numbers that I came up with and this question was asked earlier about uh, how much of that site will be returned to usable square footage? Uh, if I did my calculations right, the original site, and this was pre-portable, was about eighty-seven thousand square feet. Um, and the proposed grass looks to be about forty thousand square feet. So that's about a fifty-four percent reduction. Um, and realistically with that, that U eight field on the side, because it's kind of, you know, this discontinuous. Um, you know, we really couldn't use much of that. So you're, you're looking closer to thirty-one square feet versus the original eighty-seven thousand. So. Um, again, I'm very excited to learn more about the project here, but based on what I'm seeing. I, I don't know how much use there would be for the, you know, the soccer club, the programs. Um, you know, be it rec soccer or travel or, or tops, but certainly willing to, you know, to hear much more about it. Thank you very much.
Um, thank, thank you for that feedback. Cause that was one of my questions on how, what would be displaced. And I, I thought looking at it to U twelve is typically pretty full-size field, right? So is that like a U ten field?
Yeah. So you, you probably could fit a, a U ten, which is, you know, which is a seven by seven field that would, you know, that would fit in that area. Um, but we currently have our U ten fields over cross farms. Just a little history here. We have historically used this area for our U five through U eight rec program. Which, yeah, exactly. And, and if you, actually, if you go on Google Earth and you look at the history from like two thousand seventeen, it lays out the four fields. And what we actually do is we use it for the U fives and U sixes. We actually divide it into eight separate fields. We have all the players train at once. And then when we have the U sevens and U eights, we do the, the four fields, which are basically double the size. Um, you know, losing the Birch Grove fields with, with, uh, uh, construction, um, obviously has been very challenging for us. Uh, I, I can't believe I'm saying this, but the only thing that really saved us was triple E and then, uh, COVID. Because so much of our soccer was canceled. So, um, and then even this past fall, you know, the numbers, as Bruce said, numbers came back slowly. Um, this spring, we're literally busting at the seams, um, you know, for, for space. We've had to cancel some of our practices. We've got, you know, splitting fields. So it, it certainly has been, um, a challenge for us.
Thank you, um, for that feedback. That was one of my questions. Sorry, Brenda, um, uh, co-opted it there, but, um, I would have asked that. So since he was already talking. Um, okay, go ahead, Brenda. Do you have another, your next question?
Um, I, I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm really excited, um, about this, this opportunity that we've been presented with. Um, I'm positive we can get creative. I mean, the Birch Grove Building Committee is only two years old in a couple of weeks. Um, and look what's happening in August. We're opening a new school. So, um, I, I'm taking a look at the other successes that we've had in Talend. You know, the Lions field has been a great success. Um, the um, the wanted property reached their fundraising goals in twenty-three hours. They said they probably hadn't. Um, you know, decided to rate, you know, to put a high enough, um, uh, dollar amount on that. And, you know, looking back a few years ago, um, you know, the library was a great success. Um, I think Talend has shown again and again that we, we want these kinds of investments in our community. Um, and I think that this is, as someone has said, another feather in our camp, in our cap. Um, I have no doubts taking a look at the, um, the expertise and the, um, the dedicated, uh, community members that we have sitting on the Zoom meeting that we can't find a way to ensure that this moves forward. Um, so I, I'm really excited to see how this is going to go forward and, um, I look forward to working with everybody on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. I'm going to go ahead to Ashley because she hasn't talked yet. Ash. Madam Chair.
Who am I? I am, I, I'm unmuted. It's kind of hard to, uh, I'd never have to mute myself. So I, you know, it's kind of hard.
Free for a loop.
Exactly. So thank you everyone for this. This is great. I mean, we just got the information, um, I believe it was last week and this is an exciting endeavor. I mean, the Leboitz, thank you guys so much for, you know, even investing and wanting to put forward. I mean, just even saying that you will do, um, the eighty thousand. I mean, that's, that's a huge burden for a family. So I mean, just that you are serious about this. So I mean, here are my questions. Um, you know, I've been taking a lot of notes and I'm just going through and I kind of want to circle back to, uh, what Sophia was saying because that kind of Um, you know, I've been taking a lot of notes and I'm just going through and I kind of want to circle back to uh what Sophia was saying, because that kind of was where I, my mind's going at, because, you know, long term, we want to make sure that this, the usability is great, it's viable. You know, we don't want this to, you know, get pits and kids getting hurt or anything like that. So the upkeep is definitely something that's on my mind. Um, you know, I just wanted to see that financial affordability to do that. Um, so do we have any written commitments from like the Lions Liberty Bank, Berkshire Bank, anything of that nature yet? Like actual written? Besides, I know I noticed the um, it was twenty five thousand from the Miracle Field match, correct?
Yeah, they said what they would match initial um. Dave Putnam, they did that for you guys in East Lime, correct?
I think Dave's phone, I think he's trying to talk.
Sorry, I didn't realize you were driving.
Yeah, that's all right. Now I'm coming home from work, so I'm I'm listening to your conversation. But the Miracle League of Connecticut did pledge twenty five thousand. It did come up with that and more. So they did fundraising for our gala and some of our other fundraising events. They've been great partners in the whole uh, the whole uh, the whole process for us. So they're good with their word. And I'm on that board as well for the Miracle League. I know we've been looking to um, expand our offerings in the state. And I think Talon would be a great place to do it, so.
Another wonderful parallel about Dave and his Miracle Field is it is built on the elementary school in East Lime. So he's got a lot of connections to us there as well.
Right, correct. It is at Flanders Elementary School in East Lime. It is in 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 back of their school.
Okay, so we don't have anything written then, but
Your question, Ashley, it's hard to fundraise and raise money until we have a location.
Well, here's here's my next question that goes into it too, because I mean, that twenty five thousand, it seems as though it would only, you know, be what, ten percent? And you're looking at, you know, obviously, like the the eighty thousand to do the pavement and but here's my next question too. There's a lot of different notes here. So if we have the funding, is there a way that we can set up an endowment or do a trust or something where these, the monies can be situated where it could A, grow some return on everything? And then also know that financially it's situated and there's money for it in the future. Because like I said, I, the last thing that we need to do is have an awesome field and have it, something happen where it's not being taken care of and someone gets hurt. Because that's what I can think of. It's just, you know, ones that there's pits in the ground. I mean, the turf fields, when we start talking about it at the high school and you're like, oh, my God, this, you know, this happens, that happens. So would there be a way to regulate the funds to ensure the longevity? Like, that would be one of my next questions. Like, do we have something that we can set up?
Well, that's a, you know, that's a good question, whether we did it through our foundation or whether it was something in the town. Um, you know, I I, you know, I'm not new to fundraising. I ran the Talent Athletic Foundation for years. Sold out, sold out golf tournaments, raised between twenty and twenty five thousand dollars a year with that. Adams Adventure Golf Tournament, which is a dormant golf tournament now, Roger, I believe, the three years it ran, that's sold out. So I, so I believe, right, you know, the ongoing capital sinking fund of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars is the, is the, is the easy part. You know, I also think Talon is prime for fundraising. We um Laurel and I were Talon residents, you know, for twenty four years, and we now live in Woodstock, Connecticut. But Talon's close to our heart. We come back, we do the Challenger Baseball. Our son still lives in Talon. You know, we love the community. Laurel was involved um as an educator administrator for years. I was an EMT for the Talon Fire Department for eight years. So Talon's, you know, very special to us. And, you know, we were trying to think back of all the things our kids did that Talon doesn't do anymore, whether it's breakfast for Santa or offerings in regard to the kids. People leave Talon for their entertainment and thing, you know, and things to do. And, you know, we we have a lot of grand plans of, you know, doing an all-day concert with a food truck festival, with the former participants of um the Talon Coffee House. And do that. Another great idea, and I know, I'm sure everyone's familiar, Connecticut used to run the Nutmeg Games. You know, we'd like to get every sport involved and do a community-wide Nutmeg Game thing. I I, you know, I just, you know, other than, you know, everyone's running around, everybody's doing, you you know, playing new sports and everything else and just all those things, breakfast with Santa and, you know, softball tournaments and volleyball tournaments. And, you know, when I was running the Athletic Foundation, Tom Swanson, remember, we had the Harlem, um, the Harlem Magicians. And we sold that out. And, you know, kind of a funny story with that is, we sold it out and I had parents calling me, offering me a hundred dollars for a ten-dollar ticket. Because they had promised their kids, if they had done their homework, they could go to the game.
No, I I mean, honestly, I think that you guys are very vested into Talon. So hopefully you guys aren't moving anytime soon or anything like that.
And and our sons, you know, our son is our liaison with Little League and, you know, we absolutely love Talon baseball. And I I I don't think I, Laurel and I can prove, you know, more of our commitment in saying when it was brought up, you know, when Katie Murray brought up that there, you know, we would need money in order to pave the project. Laurel and I are willing to put, you know, we're going to try to fundraise for it. So we're not out of pocket. But we're willing, you know, to front that money to to make this happen. You know, challenges our lives. We've changed lives. I've I've done Challenger Baseball. This is my thirtieth year in doing it. And I guess the neatest thing I could ever say is what by Brian, my son was six or seven years old. He couldn't understand why he couldn't play on a Challenger Baseball team. Because he could not see the difference between these kids. And all we're trying to do is give these get special needs kids a chance. So they're not playing on a field with the sun setting in the outfield. And and we 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 tried to find a place that would not displace any other sports or anybody, you know, displace anybody else. And the fields have been offline for two years. And we thought, hey, it has the infrastructure that we're looking for. People have, you know, we we just want a little piece of it. And so, you know, that's, you know, that's really, you know, what our charge is.
The other benefit of Birch Grove is that being on school property, it can be utilized during the day for gym classes. And it can be utilized for recess as well. As even the after-school programs, the, you know, the before and after-school, FRC would have a place to go that's not muddy to play. They could play kickball there after school in a safe environment. It's fenced in when, you know, there's children at Birch Grove who have challenges where they just need to run and get some steam off. Having a small fenced-in area would be a great place for them to go to de-escalate. You know, I, as a former special ed teacher, I de-escalated with kids at Birch Grove without those boundaries, and it was tough. So I see so many advantages to having it utilized at the elementary school.
And I think that it's great that you guys are, I mean, that's awesome, but bringing this up and having these conversations. And like I said, that you are literally saying, I will put money toward this. But I just want to ensure long-term that, you know, fundraising, I'm I love fundraising, as anyone can tell you. I just put that basket together for TIS and I'm going to go purchase tickets for buying this money that I just put into the basket, because that's what you do. And, you know, I can, I understand that. And, you know, there's definitely that crew of people that do fundraising. Um, but when you're looking at the fifteen to twenty thousand, you know, having those ideas, I just would like to, you know, ensure that that money somehow, well, like I said, is either so a way of being set aside and endowment so that we know that that money is there. Because like I said, the last thing we want to have is something like falling apart in these terms. But here's, here's my next suggestion. And I don't even know if we can do this, but I'm going to throw it out there anyways. Have we thought about this as a, like a joint venture with other communities, other surrounding towns? Because you did say that, you know, there are surrounding towns that have players that would want to be involved. I mean, first of all, I don't know that we can't. I mean, it's, it's a, you know, a property that's on the school ground. So I don't know how that would in, like, interact or anything of that nature. But, you know, thinking about the banks, but what about other towns? You know, how is that community can work together to, I mean, I know we were already talking about scheduling, schedule issues. So, I mean, those are all kinds of things that I'm thinking about. Did anyone talk to another town? I mean, I don't even know if we can. Is that like
Haven't talked to the other town. We have played other towns, um, East, East Hartford as a team. Um, South Windsor as a team. And I'm sure, you know, it's not a long distance for them, and they would love to, you know, access to, you know, to a miracle field.
We are taking our challenger team to West Hartford on June fifth to play in a tournament there. You know, that's one of the advantages of having one of these safe fields. I'm sure Dave can talk a little, Dave Putman can talk a little bit about that as well.
But are 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 any other towns like in a conglomerate, in a group or anything?
They're all, right now, they're all individual.
Okay.
And, um, you know, we we, you know, if we did get it, you know, depending on scheduling, if we couldn't, you know, couldn't get it filled. You know, we 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 saw it as, you know, a T-ball. What, you know, the line, we envisioned it as sort of, on the nights we're not using it, as the Lions Field for um T-ball. I mean, because it is a smaller field, you know, with fences in and everything else. And how cool would it be that these young kids get to go out on, you know, on a synthetic turf field and play? We only dugouts and, you know, everything else. And, you know, that's another reason why I want to build the field with the dugouts is, you know, where we currently are now. There's no shelter from an eighty-five, ninety-degree day. And, you know, these kids, the kids are wired differently than us. They they get overheated a lot of times on a hot, hot night. You know, there's no water fountain. Um, so we really can't, you know, can't get anyone. But, you know, that's something we have thought about is, you know, opening, you know, opening it up to other towns. And we're trying not to monopolize the field, you know, make it available. You in regards to top soccer, if top soccer wasn't involved in this, our footprint would be much smaller. I mean, we looked at it as, you know, as a neat field for top soccer. When I was involved with top soccer, they played on the Crandall Softball Field. And again,
I think it's a great idea. I I really do. I think it is a fantastic idea. I just wanted to make sure that what we put in play would be viable for many generations.
Absolutely. And 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 we do too. Absolutely.
So I'm trying to look at it in that perspective of, you know, how can we get, you know, written commitments from these banks that you're talking to, the Lions Club? Um, see if we can possibly join up with another community. Like, I just want to see a long-term projection. You know, that's, that would be my main source. I mean, I think it's a great, wonderful idea. Um, but like I said, I just keep on writing all these notes down. And um my my main thing is like, we have that ten-year warranty and but then what's, what happens like after that ten years or what happened? I mean, it flies by really fast. So, once again, though, like I, I mean, we can go to other questions, but like it's a great idea. I just would like to see a little bit more of the long-term longevity of it. Um, I love that the Miracle Field is going to match the twenty five thousand. I I love that you guys are doing the eighty thousand. I mean, that really is, I mean, that for, you know, is commitment of, we would like this field and we are going to put the eighty thousand down and this is what we're going to do. And I'm sure the blacktop would be great. I mean, kids, you give them a little dodgeball and they're happy. And they, you know, jump ropes, hopscotch, and, you know, the long term of having an awesome field to use. It really is a great idea. I just wanted to ensure that, you know, we can start getting some of that written commitments down, written, you know, who's going to actually say, yes, you're putting it in pen, we are going to give you ten thousand dollars. So like, just something so that you guys have that knowledge of what that planning is for the future. That's all. But thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
I'm good, Tammy.
Thank you, Ash. Thank you. Um, okay, we're going back for
Can I jump in quick, Tammy? Could I jump in quick?
Who, I don't know who's speaking right now.
This is Steve. Sorry.
Oh, hi, star C. Sorry, you didn't
No, no worries.
You didn't pop up, so.
Sorry about that. Uh, to piggyback on what Steve said before, as far as the corporate funding, we couldn't really do anything until we had a plan in place. You know, we have the field or we we know where it's going. It's, you know, been approved. So now we can go full tilt with potential corporate funding as well. So that's why there's nothing really in place. There's been preliminary talks. But now that we have the plan and this is what's going to happen, we can get more people on board that way.
Yeah, no, I think that's important because I'm not just talking about, you know, for the rental fees or anything of that nature. I'm talking about, you know, having other towns maybe perhaps join in and using it as like, you know, a tri-town field. Like I said, I don't even know if it's possible because it's on school property. So that would be one of my first questions. Like, you know, even renaming it, I don't know if you can name a field if it's on properly. I I don't know the legal side of that issue. I'm sure um attorney Rick Conti is probably writing some questions down. But, you know, those are definitely some things that we can look into because, you know, maybe perhaps South Windsor would be jumping at it and be like, this is a great opportunity that we can go and and it's not about renting the field, but and actually having um an ownership of the field. So
Ashley, that just to to um extend your thought, we haven't researched it because it it is not our decision. It's up to Talon. It's up to the Board of Ed to allow us to do those things. But Manchester has a challenger team, as Steve said. East Hartford has a challenger team, South Windsor has a challenger team. And we've opened our team up to any any other town that doesn't have a challenger team. We helped way back in the day, we helped South Windsor start. So there definitely is the potential to make this a regional field, which would be Miracle Field's vision for that would be, that would be their vision for it, for us. You know, many, many towns go to West Hartford to play baseball. But again, that introduces more additional scheduling.
Yeah, it does. It's a lot. We would have to consider that from the whole town perspective.
Things are possible, but it really is up to what Talon decides they want. You know, when we talk about our two days a week, that's what we're doing now, and it works really well for our team. Would they want to play more if they had the opportunity? Perhaps they would. But um, we just have to see what's available. West Hartford is used on the weekends. I don't believe that they do challenger during the week.
Okay, because it was West Hartford and it was um, was it Putnam?
East Windsor, West Hartford, Manchester.
No, 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 where the other field is.
East Lime, that's East Lime.
Okay, I had Putnam for some reason, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think that it is great. I mean, this would be something over here, but I just, like I said, those are just, I'm thinking out loud all my questions and just kind of putting it out there, because if it is somehow, you know, something could stick and and, you know, can kind of go from that idea. You know, I just think it's worthwhile researching and looking into. That's all.
So thank you. Thank you. Um, Lou.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. But I think that uh, at one point Lisa was on, uh, that I see that she
She is, yes, Lisa, Lisa Hancock, her hand is raised. Lisa, do you want to?
For the, for the time being.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
That she may have uh some significant, important questions.
Um, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, though. A lot of my concerns have been discussed all already with Sophia and Lou and Ashley. I think you all brought up a lot of very good points. I think this does sound like an an awesome program and um opportunity for the town. Um, again, the concerns of the timing, the um, and the funding of it. Uh, I like the idea of possibly some sort of foundation being set up for the future costs of the field. Um, but there was one concern that that is still in my mind, which has to do, I think you had discussed possibly taking some loans to fund the field. And um I'm not sure legally how that would work. If if you wouldn't even be able to get loans and what the collateral would be. And what would happen if I'm not saying that you would default on the loans, um, but what happens if there isn't sufficient fundraising and the phones are, and the the loans are not repaid? Where's the liability fall? And um you know, do they come and rip out the field or, you know? Do we have any type of input on that?
Right, we we initially had approached a bank regarding financing the whole project. And and it was Berkshire Bank. And we ended, we ended up striking out with that because they, you know, between no personal guarantees and no collateral. You know, when I mentioned the loan, that's Laurel and I borrowing on our personal line of credit. We're not pledging it. It's coming out of our home. You know, in regard to that. And, you know, it just, you know, when we saw that as a hurdle, we're that committed to the special needs community of Talon in order to, you know, put up, you know, put up our own money. We're we're very passionate about this and we're asking everybody on this call to buy in and bank on us. I mean, you know, we 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 love, like I said, we love Talon. We've been involved with Talon. I'm two-time Citizen of the Year of the Talon Lions Club. They've never had a two-time Citizen of the Year. And the funny thing about that is when I got my first one in nineteen ninety-nine, I think there were fifteen people. And when Laurel and I got it joint, there was a hundred people. I think they more came for Laurel than for me. But, you know, we are committed to their town. Um, we have one in the Pirate-Tight Houses in Talon. And our son, you know, is living, you know, in the town. And our son, you know, is living, you know, in the town. And, you know, we we sort of kidded and, you know, one of our slogans may be out of the catastrophe of Pirate-type rises a Miracle Field. And I think, you know, it it it, we just look at this as such a huge asset for inclusivity for the town of Talon. And if we can make this happen and save two hundred thousand dollars by the infrastructure that's underneath this, that that's our compassion and that's our mission. There there there's no, we're looking for no money from the town of Talon. We understand um financial constraints in this day and age. It's unknowing what, you know, the town's going to get from the state, what the state's going to get from the federal government and the debt load and everything else. But we, you know, we see these special needs kids and if anybody read our package, the lives we've changed for some of these kids is just incredible. That we, and we have some players that come back now and are buddies and help us. And it's just, you know, if 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 anybody ever has a chance to come up to one of our practices, it'll put a tear in your eye. I mean, it really, really is. And it's just, it's an amazing program. Like I said, I've done it for thirty years. And I'm planning on doing it as long as I have a breath in me. And so, you know, we understand, you know, we putting people under tough time constraints and everything else, but you know, I look at these families and I look at what they go through. They have a special needs child. And one, one example I can use is Lisa and Roy Daniel on this call and they help us. And their daughter used to come to some of our games and every once in a while she would lie on the ground or bang her head on the ground. And they couldn't understand why and they, Lisa had tremendous migraine headaches. And that was a way for her to get rid of her migraine headaches. So that's the difficulties. So you know, for us to have a difficulty working with the state or working with this field or making it work or not having enough fields for normal kids is nothing compared to what these families have to go through and to give them something special and a place they they call their own. That's our compassion and that's our mission. And that's just what we're asking everyone to dig deep for. We apologize, you know, we're not professional fundraisers. We're not professional engineers. You know, we have full-time jobs. And, you know, we we we, you know, we're doing the best we can and we just, we want to give this gift to the town of Talon, to the special needs community. And also to the school with, you know, this field that can be used on the gym teachers ecstatic of a field.
Steve, I I'm sorry, but I mean, there's a question that I'd like to, you know, not to cut you short, but there's a question that I want to build on with Lisa before we get too far along. I I think then, again, these questions, I think this is an outstanding opportunity. I think this is, you know, that I I I, this, this is something that's great. And I'm in support of it, but there's, I I I've got a lot of concerns. And now the fact that, as Lisa asked about the loans, if I understand, you're taking out a personal home equity loan to fa- finance this eighty thousand dollars upfront. The question that I have now is, because this now raises a huge concern, is say if the, say if the project doesn't go forward. Say if something happens and that, you know, that we don't meet that goal of fundraising and this doesn't get built. Now that eighty thousand dollars, is that going to be the first thing that gets paid uh, by the fundraising? Is it eighty thousand dollars you're putting up front? And then after that is, say if that doesn't happen, are you looking then, like, you know, the town, because now you've done an improvement on town property with your own money? And now are you going to be looking for the town to pay you back if there's any funds that don't get paid through the fundraising? If a project falls through and then now you're looking for the town to reimburse you on it? That, I mean, that's, that's a significant.
Absolutely not.
So you're taking an eighty thousand dollar home loan?
So wait, wait, wait. Can I, can I pause everybody? We're going to pause here for a second. If I understand what Lily Woods was saying, the eighty thousand dollars that you guys are gonna, you are going to gift that to the town to cover the cost of the blacktop. So if this project never moves a day forward again, from that point, the school will be, don't take this the wrong way, but they'll be stuck with the blacktop and not having any kind of field on it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Uh, then that that
Okay.
That addresses the the one concern that I have on it is, you know, the uh, the cost of the blacktop. Uh, and, you know, so you're gifting that with the hopes of getting reimbursement through uh, through fundraising. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, then um there's other, uh, and again, uh, I'm I'm in support of this. I just think that the timing and trying to get it done right now is something that, you know, we're trying to push this through without examining everything. You're saying that there's no fields that are, there's no other sports that are going to be impacted and that, but then in the information you provided us, that you have Top Soccer listed as using it. And as we just heard, they had no idea about this whatsoever.
Jeff Gallagher, who's the Top Soccer Director.
Hold on, Mr. Lebowitz.
I'm sorry.
Hold on, one at a time. Let Lou finish before we
And that
Go on to
There's also the fact that you now have uh, soccer fields that that are now uh, we're, now we're losing a soccer field for the time being. And that this may impact other sports and other families. So I understand that we're looking at trying to build this uh, for uh, for certain families, but then there's other families that are impacted that goes back to Ms. Johnson's point of a feasibility study and input from other town people uh, regarding it. You know, so it's just concerns like that. Then comes the liability aspect of it. Um, you know, where uh, if there's issues regarding the uh, you know, while it's being built or other things, is the town going to be liable? Um, or is that going to be something that the foundation that's now doing the fundraising, is there, are they going to have to carry a separate policy for uh, for the uh, while it's being, uh, being built? Um, and then the issue of the fundraising, again, we've already hit that on on the head a bunch of times. But the fundraising for continuing on, where, again, we were, I think that we promised this before with the turf on the high school field, where this is something that we're paying for, that the fundraisers, that a fundraising was done, the field was bought. And then it was supposed to be continual, you know, that it was not something that was supposed to be burden to the town. But now it's become a burden to the town because there's no other additional fundraising to to uh, to now replace it. So we either have to do fundraising to replace it again, or at the same time, because you're looking at about the same time that this field's being built, that you now have the uh, close to the time where we'll have to do fundraising or something like that to replace the field, uh, the turf field at the high school. So there's just a lot of things where, again, we're running into a very short timeframe. And I think that that there's just too many questions that are unanswered for me to feel comfortable to take, you know, take a significant gamble on something like this. Just, you know, to potentially offset two hundred thousand dollars when the town could be on the hook for four hundred thousand dollars um, or more if we wanted to.
I think we may have a lost Lou?
Perhaps.
Okay, so while we're regaining Lou, I'm going to go ahead to the next in line, which is Arini.
Thank you, Tammy. Um, I don't want to belabor the point, but it is important to say that there's no question on the commitment of the people here who have put in a lot of work. And it is a fantastic project, but I do have a couple of other questions. Because it's been said a couple of times that the warranty is ten years, but then I heard seven. So is it seven or ten? I think it's seven, right?
I believe it's seven from what I, it's it's under warranty for seven years. I think replacement was between ten to fifteen. I think that's the difference.
Right. So is the warranty over the seven years prorated? Or is that if at year, you know, six and nine months, the whole thing collapses into the ground? Is it a full replacement for free or is it, well, you know, you get a couple of bucks because you've been using it for six years?
Um, I don't know, Mr. and Mrs. Lebowitz, if you happen to know the warranty details.
We don't. Dave Putnam, um, could you speak to that if you're still on the call?
Yeah, I'm still here. It's it's a full warranty on the, on the turf through the seven years.
Through the seven.
From the date of installation. Yes, correct.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, and then I just want to quickly reiterate, I also have some big concerns about the funding down the road. So how much will it cost? What or what is the estimate in the ten years down the road? And nobody can, you know, really predict escalation on cost, but what, what are they thinking it's going to cost to rehab it or refinish it or whatever it is that's going to be need to be done in the ten years or ten to fifteen? Is that a hundred thousand? Is it two hundred thousand? Like, what are we thinking?
Well, the 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 turf portion of the project's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to replace the um the synth- synthetic turf that's going to be there. So I guess it would be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars and maybe
Oh, so you have to do a full replacement, you're thinking at that point?
Right, at ten to fifteen years. You know, it it's nowhere going to be near a million dollars for a football field.
But still.
Maybe two, maybe two hundred, maybe two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Substantial. So I have to say I am in somewhat of the same camp as Mr. Aluba regarding the track field that we have. There was, you know, a lot of discussion. It was going to bring in revenue. It was going to be self-supporting and all of that. And it hasn't happened. And we're now looking down the pike of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to refa- resurface it. And we don't have any money to do that. And we're going to have to figure that out. So what I would not want to have happen is for that to happen with this as well. And I appreciate the fact that you're thinking ahead and going to, you know, think about fundraising annually. What I would propose instead is that you, if you could, do that fundraising upfront. Have the money in the bank, put the endowment together, you know, kind of day one, or let's, let's say in the first year. And then use that money to spin off the future. If you had two hundred thousand dollars in the endowment in the beginning, even if you had a five percent return, you'd have a hundred thousand at the end of ten years or whatever that might look like. So I would feel far more comfortable with the whole idea if that piece of it was included in the upfront costs and the upfront fundraising, because then you've got something to leap off of. And then if you can, I just, people's lives change. It's difficult to make a commitment that I'm going to do this for the next ten or fifteen or twenty years or whatever it's going to be. Just you don't know. Um, and so that, that's my concern and that would be what I would feel far more comfortable around the financial, financial part of it. I did want to ask you, do you have to pay when you go with your team to, say, West Hartford? Is there a fee for that? So they're not charging to have other folks come? You're muted.
I can't imagine that they are if that's my familiarity with the, with the Challenger and Tops programs, but Lebowitz is now that you're unmuted, feel free to.
We, uh, there's no charge for us to go. Um, we're going to bring our team. They're going to provide pizza for us. And I even spoke with um, the organizer today because I have a player who is gluten-free and they're going to order gluten-free pizza for him.
Wow.
What, what the other teams do, which we no longer do, um, being affiliated with Talon Little League, they used to pay registration fee to be a player. And we had um great, great work to get that fee removed from our players. But the Miracle Leagues now do charge a registration fee for their players to play on their leagues. And with that registration fee, each player gets a real jersey, you know, a real baseball jersey. Right now, our players get t-shirts like, like, you know, we have to play in. But as a Miracle League with their registration fee, they get a full uniform with a um, Miracle League patch and much more professional. So those are, again, things that, you know, may make some changes. And with our red, if we do do a registration fee, that could go into some special funds. We've just always tried to keep fees as low as possible um, or and or non-existent for our players. You know, the Talon Little League has been very, very supportive and we've actually had um, a former parent subsidize a lot of our things. They subs- have subsidized equipment for us. They've subsidized um, sweatshirts for the players and um, a lot of nice things, in-kind donations.
And really, in 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 regards to the fundraising, you you're probably a hundred percent correct. You keep the momentum going while you are fundraising and, you know, and 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 that's a nice advantage to this site with the savings. Um, we can save almost two hundred thousand dollars if we fundraised as much as um, Dave Putnam's East Line did. We um, we would be there. And and personally, that would make our lives easier too, not having to uh, annually fundraise.
I I think one of your potential, you know, donors is Sustainable CT. I know we're part of that and I feel like all projects really need to have that sustainability lens applied to them. And to the degree that we would be saying, we're going to make this huge investment and we want it to be sustainable, we want it to be here for the future. I feel like that's a key component. Again, there's, there's timing things and things that I understand others are are concerned about, but I think that would really just, to your point, it would take a load off of a lot of people's minds and you you'd kind of know that you're in good shape. So I I do appreciate all your work and and thank you for your um, answers to my questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rainie. Uh, Steve.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to, I believe, Lebowitz, this would be the answer to his question. So it sounds like um, the Chair of the Birch Grove Building Committee, Katie Murray, mentioned that um, if this was to go through and kind of be greenlit, that you would have to establish a new contract with Demato. And I'm just kind of curious. I know that there's a lot of, you know, you have to wait for the right, right person to pull the trigger, but are are they readily available to do that work? In part because they're kind of a captive audience still finalizing that project to to do that phase one.
So I'm gonna butt that over um, to Katie, but I also want to say I I want to be cautious on how we're looking at this because I don't see this as a project that the Lebowitzes would be handling, like maintaining. That was one of my questions, like further along. Bev is on and I would need, we would need to talk to um, the town manager and the lawyer because it's town property. Um, I can't see that we're going to have a resident managing um, this kind of a project. But Katie, from the perspective of um, us having to engage with Demato for this other work, is that something that you feel comfortable speaking to?
Uh, sure, only because Todd Penny already explored this. So he, he helped me get to this answer. Demato is, is from what I've heard, is willing to do this work. Um, as long as it's done while Demato is on site. Once Demato leaves the site, um, then it's a, I think it's a different story, but if they're on site doing the re- the work on the rest of the field, they said that they would also accommodate this additional contract uh, to to do the prep for Miracle Field.
So it would have to happen um, while they're doing the other work and it, we couldn't have it like pause along the way?
No, the, uh, Demato, you know, has committed to restoring this field um, to the state and to Talon. And they have a timeframe in which they have to do it. Um, so I have expressed that it would be very difficult for uh, me to get behind a proposal that delays anything on the Birch Grove project, including field restoration.
One hundred percent on that. Nothing that's going to delay the timeline of Birch Grove at all, period. Hard stuff. Um, okay, so okay, uh, Steve, go ahead. Does that answer your question?
Heard when I initially wrote down the notes, I wasn't sure if that, if Katie clarified. So it wouldn't be Lebowitz is engaging in a new contract through their Miracle Fields, five oh one C three would have to be overseen by the, the Board of Education or the town of Talon. Because I guess, I guess I wanted to answer clarify because
I I can't speak to the contracting requirements for the town. I'm sorry, can't speak to that.
No, it's fine because because that's phenomenal, but it always feels like time and time again, we get a new project and they get thrown into it and they do a phenomenal job and they're dedicated, but you know, we pass the budget to try and, and we can't get them until January to have a dedicated project member and um, project manager, I should clarify. And I just want to make sure that they're not overburdened. You know, they were probably thinking, okay, I'm going to get them with Birch Grove and now suddenly there's going to be another project for them. It's going to be a multi-year process. And I I know they just have a lot of we we talk frequently about staff being kind of stretched thin and having to carry multiple hats and that's just, I want to make sure that we're providing a good, good balance between the town and other private groups or five one C threes being able to manage the, the multi-phase project of this, if it, it does move forward. So I don't know if that's
I agree. Yeah, I think that's something that we would need to talk about, Steve, because it is, this was, this would be something that would fall back on um, the project management piece of it. And we would need to speak to Rick Conti on how all of that kind of interacts with the donations and everything else also. So I think there's definitely a broader conversation we have to have here.
Yeah. So in general, I'm, I'm in favor of being tent of this and I hope it can move forward, but I think it does, you know, I, I'm not saying no, I just Yeah. So in general, I'm, I'm in favor of being tent of this, and I hope it can move forward. But I think it does, you know, I, I'm not saying, no, I just definitely need some of those questions answered in terms of the management ends and how much can be done. And make, just making sure everyone's on the same page and has realistic expectations of what work is going to be required of, you know, Pete Zaba, Bev Bellity, or, you know, all these other staff and administrative members that there's suddenly, nobody's getting thrown into this without really being aware of what's required. But I, but I do project, and I think it, it should move forward if doable and, and suitable for, for the needs.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
Uh, no, no other questions.
Okay, so I'm going to jump ahead to Dana, because she hasn't asked a question yet. Uh, so Dana, if you want to go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Dana Felbin, Talon Board of Education. Um, first of all, I just want to thank everybody for coming this evening. And I want to preface my, my statement and my question. Just thanking the Lebowitz fam- family for everything that they've done for the community of Talon. Um, I know they've been here for several years. They have roots here. They no longer live here. And they still want to do right by Talon. So thank you for everything that you do and everything that you can continue to do. Um, I know that the funding has really been dissected this evening, this evening. So I'm going to focus my questions on what this can do for the not-average athlete, um, the not-average family. Um, I'm lucky with the fact that we've, when we found Talon here for my family, there's all those resources available. Um, whether it was through the preschool programming, the school program, or the athletics, the library, uh, the town hall, the museums, the, the pla- the complexes, et cetera, et cetera. I can go on and on. Um, I think someone said it this evening is, not with Challenger baseball or folks with challenges, everything is not easy. It's hard. Um, and I think one of the conversations that someone had talked about was even just the uniform, uniform, um, makes them feel a part of something. Um, so I wanted to talk a little bit about that and how that looks, making them comfortable coming into a program in Talon, or going as a team to West Hartford, or going to East Line. I'm hoping you can give us a little bit more vision of what that looks like for your folks with the Challenger folks and having this field, what that will bring normalcy to them.
Uh, that's going to go to the Lebowitzes then.
Well, yeah, the, the neat thing with this field, where there being a showplace, we, we, we love to welcome other towns to Talon. It would help the economic development of Talon, bringing, bringing it in. And we have had players that have difficulty getting up to the field at lower crandles. You know, and playing on the field or with the bases. Um, we have difficulties in regard to the infield being a rock-hard infield with balls coming up and, you know, going after the children. We've, we've had, you know, bouncing up toward the children, the difficulties with the sun setting in the outfield. Um, we're, we're basically the weak sister who gets put on the field that nobody wants. And, 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 you know, we're looking to change that, and we're looking for, to give these kids a fe- you know, feeling where, you know, they feel great. They, they, they have that self-esteem. They're excited. You know, our kids get, you know, really excited about that. We don't, we don't have the parents yelling at each other or yelling at umpires, or, you know, it, it's a great atmosphere, and not only for the kids, but for the buddies that are part of this. We have, this year, we're overwhelmed. We have 20 players, and we have 25 to 30 buddies that are helping, um, getting community service hours and are getting involved in that, too. And this is changing their lives and making their lives better, too. So it's not just about, even about the kids, but it's also what it does for the community, you know, what it does for the buddies.
The buddies to have expressed many times in our programs that they get as much, if not more, than they think the players get out of it. They love to come. They love to help. Um, and it, it's, it's amazing. We, we have testaments from families, and, and I will highlight a couple of them. Um, one of them said that the baseball experience, they started playing baseball, and they played before there was top soccer. But when they played baseball, that was the only exposure their daughter had to typical children. She went to a private school for special needs children, and she was an only child. So when she came to baseball, being involved with the buddies was her first experience being with typical children. And it's a welcoming environment. The families support each other. You know, we understand if there's a player that has a meltdown in the field, we give them space. We know, you know, what that's all about, so we support them. We, our goal has always been that the, the players come and the coaches and the buddies take over from there, and the parents can sit back and just enjoy the joy of watching their child have fun. This year, we haven't been able to do that because of COVID. We've involved the families back in to be the athletes one-on-one. And then we've had the buddies support them. And it's been amazing. You know, parents don't, don't question that. They do what they need to do. They help when they need to help, and they enjoy it. Um, and another, another wonderful story of this year happens to be with the child with the biggest physical challenge. She's in a wheelchair, and this child is seven years old and does not like her wheelchair. She's never wanted to go into her wheelchair, but now that she's playing Challenger baseball, she gets home from school. And if it's not a baseball day, she goes up and she rattles her wheelchair because she's mad. She's not getting in that wheelchair to go to baseball. And she gets there, and she's in her wheelchair. She's buckled up, thank goodness, because it's bumpy. The, you know, the, the field is bumpy for her. But she laughs, and she kicks her legs, and she's, she's not, she doesn't speak lang- words, but her whole body is alive with joy. And her brother and her sister tag along behind her because they're so proud to be there for her. Um, another, another example this year that we had, um, is that, uh, there's a, a baseball player who went home and, um, his sibling was actually his buddy, and his sibling was a little bit younger. And he came home from Challenger baseball and said, Mom and Dad, I want to play baseball, too. You know, he had never been involved in baseball before, and he went to Challenger and, and saw it as baseball, real baseball, and he wanted to play. So it's, we, again, we invite you all to come join, come get involved. For us, I, I go back to, I had three young kids, and my three kids grew. And when we started Challenger in Talon, my youngest Katie was in my backpack, on my back. And that was the safest place to have her. By the time she was three, she was standing side by side to one of the older Challenger players with a baseball, uh, I think she had a biking helmet on or a ski helmet to protect her little head. And her job was to look up at the little, the player who was probably close to five feet at the time, because he was a tall player, and remind him to use nice language on the field. And, you know, it's the same player, I'll, I'll backtrack. When he was a few years younger, he wasn't using nice language. And the incentive to use nice language is he could hold baby Katie at the end of the game. Um, so it's be, it's become such a piece of us, and it's such a gift to us. But those days, when I was a typical mom at home, having to juggle three kids and homework, and having juggle dinner, I'd meet Steve, who would be coming from work 90% of the time, with maybe dinner at our trunk. And then we'd go play baseball, and I'd get there thinking I was exhausted, and I'd look what these families went through to get there with the kids. Um, as the kids got older, it became a fourth child, because Coach Steve had to be at the field, and Coach Mom had to go bring the other kids to their sports if they had sports that day. So we're, there were days when I had to show up at Challenger, make sure Steve had dinner, make sure all the equipment was there, make sure the buddies were organized. I'd drive to UConn to drop Brian off for hockey. I'd drive to Bolton to drop my girls off for Irish dance, and then come back. But that leveled me in such a way and lets me give back in such a way. I had a brother with Down Syndrome, so it's always been in my heart. Um, but again, it, it's just, it's given me more, I think, than we've ever given them. So there's a little bit more on the heartstrings piece of it. But, uh, it, it's important. It's important to know.
Well, thank you. Sorry, hang on. Sorry, can you hear me? I'm away from the Yakko.
Yep.
Um, yeah, well, I, first of all, I, again, I want to reiterate the fact of, I'm so thankful and grateful for what you're, what you and your family are doing and attempting to continue to do for the town of Talon and for Challenger baseball. And, um, I brought this with this Miracle Field. I think it's, we would, um, be doing a disservice for the town of Talon and a disservice to this program if we didn't take advantage of the crumbling foundation, uh, potential opportunity that that's brought up for us through Birch Grove and through the new project that we have at the Birch Grove site, and so on and so forth. And, um, yes, you've talked about funding. I think we've, we've brought up a lot of, several people have brought up a lot of concerns. Uh, we've also talked about a lot of opportunities to make this happen. Um, and you did, it, the money that you and your family are willing to put upfront speaks volumes of this program. Um, it speaks volumes of what you think of this program and what families that you surround yourself with think of this program. So, um, I definitely appreciate your time this evening. Um, you did, uh, answer my next question was about the Buddy Program, which is a great opportunity for, uh, our continued, our Talon citizens to be, uh, involved in community service and support in other programs. Um, so I think that as this continues to evolve, it's a, it's a great opportunity for our youngest citizens, um, and even, you know, folks of our Talon Public School System community to get involved and, and help with this program. As you said, you families probably get more out of it volunteering and supporting than actually being the families that, um, we're trying to do this for. So, uh, again, I just want to thank you guys for your presentation. I definitely think that you've exhausted, you've answered a lot of the questions about funding. I think we still need to continue to dissect that. But, um, in the heart of it, it's, it's for these families, um, to give them something that's not as hard as everything else is. So thank you for your time. Thank you, Tammy. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Dana. Uh, now I am going to, we're going back around here. Um, Sophia?
Thanks again. And, um, um, again, I, like I said, I can go on and regale everyone regarding, you know, understanding the value. It's not a dispute of the value of having this field installed. It's just the fiduciary and the legal obligations that I have a concern with. Um, I, I wrote down what I had to say, because I want to make sure that I get every point out. But it's clear that my colleagues and I see the value and recognize the need for this asset, but the timing investing into planning this project and all the details involved. It's just that I find it difficult to assume that all the necessary details and requirements could be met in order to be included in this existing project. Um, the, in all fairness, we have a contractor that already has his foot in the door, and we're already looking to have a negotiated second contract that he, they will gain the benefit from without doing a request for proposals to see if there are any other contractors that could have access to doing this. I don't know, and like I said, again, I'm new, Talon, you know, and how it works, but a request for proposals allows for and more. It allows for equal access to other companies to be able to, to be able to bid on that kind of project. But when you have a contractor already in the door and saying, okay, well, we could just tie it in and make it advantageous for us, it makes it at a disadvantage for other contractors. So I just have, you know, coming from, and again, recognizing that there's other companies that might be able to do this. I don't know if Demoto is the only one that can do it, but in all fairness, it should be, I would recommend that a request for proposals be sent out for this project to give fair access. And if Demoto's in, and he can do it while he's working on Birch Grove, then we move forward. But in, the, the devil is in the details, unfortunately, where I can speak forever as a mother to a Challenger athlete, but as a council member, I have to think about, you know, everyone else in Talon and the timing for including this into this project. And again, you know, I'm not, again, I'm not disputing the investment. I'm, you know, I'm just reserved regarding the concern that we fleshed out all of the legal and financial obligations and enough time to, you know, say that this is feasible. It's not about feasibility when you want to meet a need. And there is a need, but included in that feasibility study is the need, the financial obligation. Location and the public has a right to be able to, you know, review that and speak on it as well. And, you know, with a special meeting, all of a sudden, because we're trying to, you know, I, for lack of better words, push this all in into one package, we're, we're discounting the taxpayers. We're discounting the constituency and, you know, having, letting them know that this is a plan, and we'd like to know and get the public input on this plan. So again, the value is obvious. The, the need is obvious. But whether or not the public has been able to speak on it, and we've given them all of what they can review, I, you know, I just have a concern. So if it means that we have to do a feasibility study and, uh, for two years more for this project alone, just to ensure that Taloners are like, yeah, let's do this. Let's pay for this. This is something that we want to do as a whole in the long run for paying taxes toward it. I think that we need to, like I said, the Firehouse's referendum, we were behind it. I don't want to discount and say that everyone would be behind it without knowing if they actually would. We can perceive and presume, but we need an actual base to be able to, to know that this is, we're acting on behalf of the entire constituency, not just a segment. So, you know, I, I hate to be the devil's advocate. Like I said, again, I have a Challenger child. I have ADHD children. I have unique children, meeting their needs. As a mom, you know, personally, I can do that. But if I'm looking to have the community support those needs, I would like to know if they can and if they're willing. And doing it this way just doesn't seem that we've given them enough time to be able to review the process as well. I yield. And again, thank you for stepping up. Thank you for saying that we need to do this. But we need to have this conversation with the entire town and not just the members that are here today. Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, we have Katie.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to, um, pass along, I guess, a few comments that I heard from the Building Committee when we met last week. Um, I think a lot of the concerns that have already been brought up um, were questions that the Building Committee had. Uh, but we also had, I guess, a few technical questions about, uh, the site itself. We're dealing with technical issues on this site in other places. So we have some, kind of the same questions we have for Demoto. Um, are there any drainage concerns? Um, this area, we know it's not close enough to a wetlands to have, um, to have a need for wetlands approval, but what about drainage?
Um, I'm assuming that that would probably go to Todd as the engineer. Very good question, Katie.
Yeah, so there is existing infrastructure in place. Uh, there was not going to be any direct drainage, uh, as a part of this project at, at this point in time. It's going to be all sheet flow off. Uh, I was gonna, it's been graded so that it would be a little bit higher in sheet flow, a little bit higher than that ring road, so it all sheet flow off of that. There is existing drainage in the southwest corner. Um, you know, it's, I've been a little bit of a disadvantage to know exactly how the demolition is going to happen. Katie, we, we've had this conversation before, but right now, there is no drainage because all, everything drains off of the site now. Um, and I was going to compliment the grading plan for Chal- for the Miracle Field to continue that. And I was going to compliment the grading plan for Challenger, for the Miracle Field to continue that sheet flow.
So the, the concern is, is that we're adding, this project would add a substantial amount of impervious surface to that field. You know, there is a lot, I agree with you that, you know, adding the loop road in itself adds impervious surface. And, you know, there's existing drainage in place, but it's not a perfect system out there. There, we do get a lot of ponding on some of the lower parts in the northern section of that area. I know that some of that ponding is being addressed with the current building project. But I had someone on the Building Committee brought up, you know, with adding this impervious surface, has there been any review of the drainage on that site?
And so in my estimation, the amount of runoff that we'll be getting off of this site would not impede the remaining soccer field. I mean, there needs to be, so we're, we're kind of approaching this, I'm approaching the design in a little bit of a vacuum. We've had this conversation. And D'Amato has a restoration plan, right? And I think there is some gray areas to what he's doing, what he's not doing, you know, in terms of removing everything and then bringing things back in, or is he leaving gravel or keeping gravel? Again, I've approached this, that there is existing drainage in that southwest corner. This, the, the sheeting or the grading of the plan is the mound is kind of the high spot. And then everything kind of crowns off from there. So it will go into different locations. It's not going to all just go towards the soccer field. So there is, it is, you know, the grading does happen and gets divided. So there'll be an area, again, this will be higher than the surrounding bleachers and sidewalk areas. So it all will all sheet off and then sheet into the loop road. And then there's drainage out into there. And then it will just drain into the grass and it get absorbed into the grass.
So Katie, I think you're bringing up a really good point here. And this is again, a logistics thing. So Mr. Penny, no offense or anything, but you don't work for the town. So I know that we would probably have to have our own town people kind of reviewing this project perspective like Birch Grove is doing for, for that committee. So Rick, add that to your list of things that we're going to have to, to figure out because this is going to have to be a plan that's managed by the town because it's town property. So, but Katie, keep asking good questions. I do know that there have been issues with that field in the past, though, being a wet field. I can't tell you how many times we played soccer on there and left muddy bunnies, so.
I hear you. These questions, I have a great committee. So these questions came from, from the Building Committee. There's a concern about leaving the insulation and underlayment under the field. Right? This is the technical details of what D'Amato would not be removing. Do you, can you speak to any concerns about leaving the insulation certainly and the underlayment there?
Well, I mean, to the $3,500 credit that they were going to give us, I already told Steve and Laurel, forget about it. It's not, it's not worth what I thought the credit would be. So I would have them remove it. I was not worried because of the fact that, that it's a paved surface and you wouldn't be getting the infiltration down through the asphalt. So I was not concerned with the insulation and the longevity of, run it by a couple other contractors. They weren't concerned with it either. Actually, the contractor that built the East Line field. But for $3,500 and all of the issues that it would cause in putting in the fencing, I said to Steve and Laurel, you'd probably pay a premium with going through that. So it wasn't a very big cost savings. So as we got D'Amato's information, Steve and Laurel and I talked about that to not basically incorporate that.
So that now my question is, I'm sorry, I got distracted now. Do we really need to do it right now while D'Amato's on site? I mean, if they're not going to, if they're going to be removing the insulation and underlayment anyway, do we really need to do it right now?
So, and again, this is starting to get into technical questions, right?
Yeah.
Katie kind of does that, like.
D'Amato's credit, if I can finish, D'Amato's credit for leaving was removing bulldozing the gravel, removing the insulation and bulldozing it back. D'Amato's change order or credit is going to keep the gravel there.
So if you, I love the idea of this project. But I'm not sure that based on what you're saying, Todd, that it, we need to do it while we're also trying to gain back this, this site. I mean, if the credit, the only credit you're really taking advantage of is the gravel, then why not let D'Amato just restore it entirely? And then your cost is to what? Remove the topsoil?
Well, again, again, I don't know if we want it, this is a public meeting. And this has all been coming out over the last couple of days, is really, I expected them to leave or remove, been removing the gravel. That's the conversations that we've been having. In his change order proposal, he's going to leave the gravel there and put the topsoil on top of it. That's his, that was his assertion in the change order. So he's not removing the gravel.
But there is no change order yet, right, Katie? Right now, the assumption is that it goes back, right? And any credit that happens cannot be part of anything that the Leibowitz was doing anyway. So if you're, so there is no change order at this point. I thought the assumption here was that they were going to leave it as is and then we were going to tar over it. But now we're saying that's not.
Right, well, exactly. And what I'm saying is still leave the gravel there, but have them get rid of the insulation for $3,500. It's not worth it in interfering with the installation of the fencing. I, I thought that value was going to be much higher, Tammy. I thought it was going to be in the neighborhood of 15,000 to 20,000 in my, in my estimation. But.
So Todd, I'm sorry, I, it's a little late. I just want to understand. So the, the work that, that you guys would ask D'Amato to do is to remove the insulation and put the gravel back. And then put the appropriate subbase for the asphalt and then the asphalt. Is that what you're?
No, what I'm saying is D'Amato's credit was to only not remove the insulation.
Okay.
Right. He was going to leave everything else there.
Per your request?
Yes, based on what I felt his restoration scope was.
But if we don't move forward with Miracle Field, he's going, he's going to remove the gravel and put the topsoil down and hydrose.
And, and, and we would still want him to leave the gravel if the Miracle Field is going to go here. Yes.
Okay, so if, if you didn't do the project right now, if it, if it was something that you waited until next year to do and you did it on this site because, you know, this might be the best site, you know, a lot of people have chimed in, this probably is the best site in Tallinn to do it. But if you had to do it next year, what kind of rework would you have to do for the, for the fields, for your Miracle Field?
If the asphalt wasn't put down?
Yes.
Well, if you were going to put the topsoil down, we would excavate out the topsoil, then have to bring in the gravel and then put in the asphalt.
Okay, so I, I guess you, I don't want to put you on the spot, Todd, so maybe you could look into it, but what kind of additional costs would that assume for this project?
Yeah, I'd have to look into that.
Because that to me speaks to whether we really need to do it now and it is, it is a really urgent thing. Or can this wait until some of the maybe funding questions have been addressed?
Right. Right, again, the, the premise was the change order was going to be a little bit more substantial. And I'm sorry, Katie, but I had the misconstrued understanding that, that whatever credit we got, as long as we put it towards the restoration of that area, it would go, it, it would go to paying whatever portion of that restoration. I misunderstood that in our conversations. So where I thought that $3,500 credit would go to the 80,000, that has become crystal clear today that that is not going to happen.
Okay, and I apologize if I wasn't.
Right, there is no savings. And you might as well just have D'Amato remove the, the $3,500 credit doesn't do anybody any good.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I, I wanted to understand that. So thank you. I, I've spent a lot of time working on this site and one of the things that I constantly do is ask about the impact to the kids. And I think that from what you've said, we have two diverse communities that were, this field would service, if I understand this correctly. One is the, the special needs programs, athletic programs that you, you want to host there. And the other is our Birch Grove students. Since this, this site would be, the Miracle Field would be usable to the school during school hours, is that correct? Yep, okay.
That's how I understand it, yes.
Okay, and so I think Dr. Willett did mention that, or maybe it was Mr. Staba mentioned that this would be used for recess and gym. Is the expectation that this would service all the students at Birch Grove or is there a subset of population? I mean, would this just be used for pre-K? I don't know. Dr. Willett or Peter or Ann?
Yeah, Dr. or Pete, if you want to talk to that, I would assume that it's just whatever you guys at the school would want since it's school field and it would be used for recess, but please correct that if I'm wrong. Maybe Pete probably.
You know, there's no specific group. What I do think it would allow is to have more recess more often, especially in the wintertime or after rains. I, I think that was kind of one of the issues. The old Birch Grove soccer field was a little bit wet. To Dave's credit, I used to coach there at the U5, U6 years, for many years. I've been a Tallinn soccer coach for 13 years now. And, you know, and it was a fairly wet site and some of that had to do with prior, prior drainage issues. We've resolved some of those with the current portables. But I, I think it would serve us a lot of different, or serve a lot of different types of kids. And not just our own kids. I think you could see other people come and practice drills or, or come and, you know, even could be a high school student that wants to practice dribbling on the field or, or things where they don't always end up going to, to other areas because a field might, might actually be used. We don't have lights at that location, so the, the use is going to be less than the Tallinn High School turf field. You're going to have to use it during, you know, lighted hours. But, you know, I, I think it would help with recess. I think it would help with the other programs. A lot of those programs are going to use that at nights and then use it on weekends. But, and it could help for some events too, if folks decide to do events.
And Pete, how many students are at Birch Grove? You know?
Well, if you go by the state of Connecticut, we constructed that school for 477 students.
Okay, thank you. So maybe the Leibowitzes could give us a little, I know some of this you've already said, but I'm doing a quick tally, right? If I've got 477 students in Tallinn in any year, how many different players could you, could you think of going through this field on a normal year?
We could see a lot. I mean, you know, using it as a T-ball field on other nights that we're using it, you know, each T-ball team is 15 or 20 kids and everything. So I, you know, I could see it on a weekly basis being used by, you know, a minimum of 100 kids. And, you know, our, our main vision, and we don't want to make everybody's head hurt or make anybody's life difficult. When we all started this and approached Dr. Willett, our main mission was, would he be willing and could we move forward with having a Miracle Field at the Birch Grove site? If it creates a lot of complication and everything, that, that's how we all started. So we're not trying to make it difficult on anyone. We're not trying to make it hard. Our vision is a Miracle Field at a handicap accessible site. And that's all we really want. And, and, and that's, you know, if I can walk out of this meeting and everybody say, you know, Steve and Laurel, it's a great idea. Keep going, fundraising it and keep it going. And, you know, if you can raise the money or get it going, you have a site. That's all Laurel and I could ever ask for. And if it creates difficulty with the state, you know, the state of Connecticut or D'Amato and, you know, Sophia, if we can get it for cheaper, we're all for that. So you know, we're not digging in on this in regard to, this is it. When we started all this and approached Dr. Willett, we just wanted to put a Miracle Field at Birch Grove. And it was that innocent and that's simple. And I've learned a lot more about construction and subbase and everything else than I have as a CPI ever want to know. And, you know, Kate, you've been great and Todd's been great. And, you know, so, you know, in summary, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for the Board of Ed, we're looking for the Town Council to say, great idea, keep going, fundraise for it. And, you know, if that all works out, Birch Grove is your site. Because if, you know, if we walked away from this and we didn't know and we're not sure, fundraise first and everything else, I can fundraise $300,000. Everybody on, you know, two years from now and everybody on this call is not on the Town Council or Board of Ed, and I've raised $300,000 and it's really hard to give the money back.
I think, you know, the challenge is that you can't fundraise for something that you don't have a location for. And it's hard to get the location without the guarantee of the fundraising. So we've kind of gone back and forth and back and forth. The reality is, we have a population just in Tallinn of 325 disabled children in school. Right now, we just have a small portion that we're serving. If we have this facility, we could have multiple teams. We could have a team for our littlest kids and we could have a team for those big hitters. And we'd be able to do so much more, but we do what we can. But we do what we can, and will continue to do what we can. But again, it's, it's what comes first, and at this point, we've gotten to the point where we need to find a home. And a location, and then we can work on everything else.
And I, I hear you, Steve, I mean, I have learned more about construction, um, than I ever thought I would know in the past year and a half on Birch Grove, it's, uh. Uh, quite impressive sometimes, the words that come out of my mouth, I'm like, I didn't, didn't know that.
See, I just need to interject that you are amazing, I knew it before, but this project, you've just rocked it, so thank you.
Well, I can't wait to see kids in there next year, it's gonna be great. Um. I, I, I would say that in, you know, evaluating the, all the evaluation I've had to do of the Birch Grove site. Over. The past year and a half or so. Is. This is a great site for this application. We have additional handicap parking spots that we put in with the modulars that we're gonna keep, and they're right next to the field. Um, this whole facility is, um, you know. Is going to be an accessible facility. Um, and, and there's a lot of that on the inside, but, uh, Pete Staba has been working incredibly hard. To make sure that this is an acceptable, accessible, uh, campus on the outside too. Um, so, you know, the playground that we have there is. Built for, uh, all range of children. Um. So that it would be, I know Adam's, it's not quite Adam's Adventure in terms of accessibility, but, um, you know, it is, it's a good playground. Um, I think that students could, children could enjoy a, a game and the playground space. Um, and it, it is an accessible site. Um, I, I think that. From looking at all the other sites in town and listening to Pete, who's sort of an expert, at least on the school sites, this is a great place to put it. Um, and I, I love the idea, and. I hope it, I hope it goes, continues to go forward, because you guys are clearly very passionate about it. Um, and just remember, as you're talking to people, um, we should all remember, I mean, we're talking about servicing. Seven hundred or more students or children, I guess, every year. Um, between the Birch Grove students who are, you know, in school there, and then, you know, if you had, say. Uh, two teams or so, uh, two different. Uh, groups of kids, you know, for soccer and baseball, you know, between that, this could service seven hundred or more children in our community every year. Um, and. That, that vision just brings so much joy to my. My mind, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Katie. Uh, I think, Brenda.
Hi, thank you, uh, I want to put on two different hats right now, first, I want to put on my sustainable CT hat. Um, and also my, uh, Central Region Tourism hat. For sustainable CT, that was brought up about funding. Um, that funding's not going to be around forever, so the faster that we get, um, things moving, the, the. Better our opportunity is to get some matched funding. I also want to point out that Sustainable CT, one of their primary missions, the first thing, the number one thing they look at is equity. So this is absolutely a perfect project. Um, for our town, who is committed to Sustainable CT, who is enrolled in their program, um, to be moving forward with. Um, it, this. You know. I, I'll leave it at that because it's almost nine-thirty. Um, for my tourism, I want to, um, mention that. Uh, what Katie was bringing forward was that it's bringing people into our town. Um, and I believe the Leibowitzes also mentioned that, with, um, having twenty kids. Um, servicing a minimum of a hundred kids a week, you know, that's three hundred people who are driving through town. That will probably be going through the new, um, drive-through. To, um, you know, spend money in our town to, um, ensure that we have some. Um, extra jobs here, so that money is being spent within our community. Um, Dr. Willett did a wonderful. Uh, bit of looking into. What having sports in our town brings to our local economy, what having our schools in our town brings to our local economy. And this just enhances what's happening in our local economy. Um. And I, also keeping the kids in our community instead of having to go to another. Um, town. It, it helps builds the friendships, it helps build the relationships, it gives a support system not only to the students who are. Um, playing on the fields, but their buddies, it gives a support system to the parents. Um, you know, while my kids did not have. Um. Physical. Um. Uh, needs. Um, they had other needs, and being able to be with parents who understand what you're going through. Who you can talk to, and who you can complain to, and then. Understand and be able to just say, yes, I hear you, I, I know what you're going through. Um, and then sometimes be able to offer that support. This, I, I see this program. Um, and the, having the availability and ease of being able to participate in this program. Um. As being helpful to the entire community. Um, it, it helps us on a lot of different levels. Um, especially, I mean. I wish we had something like this when my kid was eighteen months old, going through everything she did. Uh, it, it's tough. It really is tough. Um, and I appreciate everything that this, this program could bring to our town. Um. I, I am one hundred percent behind finding a way to make this move forward. Wherever there, if there's enough will, there's going to be a way to do this, and the people that have the most drive to get this done are sitting here on the Zoom meeting. Um, and I know that with the support that we can offer them as a town. And the, the supportive leadership, we can get this done, so, um. I, you know, I don't know if you wanted to speak anything more to the, you know, building of the community, or to, um, you know, our local economy, but. Um, you know, I wanted to bring those things up, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Um. Lou.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, I, I agree with Brenda a hundred percent, I think that this is something that is an outstanding project, I think it's something that definitely needs to be done. I think it's something that, uh, for the Birch Grove area, that it's an ideal area. My, the biggest concern that I have is, does it need to be done right now? And that's the, that's the question that we're all gonna have to answer, uh, is, you know, there's just. I feel that this is something that is great, that we need and that we can go forward with, but there's just too many unanswered questions for us to push forward, something right now. Um, a- at the, uh, and try and fit it in to the timeframe of the, uh, of the Building Committee and, uh, the issue of Birch Grove. So, I'm a hundred percent behind this, I think most of us here, if not all of us here, aren't behind it, I mean, are behind it. But it's just a matter of the timing of it, and getting everything, getting all the answers, questions answered, and getting everything squared away before we move forward on it. That's all I have to say, I just want to say thank you very much for your time, I mean, this has been an outstanding presentation, you've answered a lot of questions. Um, and I think it's something that we just need to do, uh, I would, I see that Chris from the, uh, uh, Building Committee is on here. Um, and I, I think that this is something that should be sent back to the Building Committee, uh, for, uh, for, for consideration as well, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, so Chris, uh, Shidel, you're on the Birch Grove Building Committee, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, you can go ahead.
Yeah, I, I've just been listening to the conversation, I just wanted to, um, recognize and appreciate everybody who has, um. Raised lots of valid concerns this evening as well, and. Um, one of the things, just from a Building Committee perspective, that I think would be very important to take away is to understand. Um, given what we learned this evening, what the rework would be. And I would, um, challenge both the Building Committee and the Town Council to perhaps come up with the way. Where we could, um, find a, a dual-use short-term solution, where we can ensure that the field is completely usable. Um, by the school system and restored to the original intent, while at the same time perhaps. Uh, reserving, uh, that section of the field for future use. Um, while the Leibowitzes, the support, the supporters of this, uh, given project. Um, find a way to secure the necessary fundraising, both to reduce the risk for the Building Committee, as well as to support what. Sounds like, um, everybody here on the call today, you know, it sounds like, uh, supports a really good cause. So, I, I don't know if, if there's more of a, 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 a gestural motion that could be made either at the, the Town Council level or the Building Committee level. To say, hey, you know, we're gonna finish the field as intended, but let's make sure that, you know, we all understand, we, there's a potential use here that we want to reserve moving forward. Um, I, I did also want to say that, um, from an engineering perspective, I know the town engineers haven't looked at this yet, but I am also concerned about the potential drainage issues that were raised. On the Building Committee, so if we are serious about this, I, I, I do think that's something that needs to be, uh, looked at and addressed before moving forward, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, um. Um, I, I agree, I think that, as I mentioned, you know, we would need to have our town engineer in all of, like, this is gonna have to be handled like a regular project. Um, as it would be, a regular project, and obviously, it's gonna have to be worked between the Town Council and the Board of Ed to make sure that. Everybody on, on both elected bodies are good with the usage and everything else, so, um, I appreciate your feedback. Um, and I see, uh, Mr. Scully has their hand up, but this is not a public hearing, so if, um, you weren't directly invited as a, a member of the, um, one of the. Elected boards or committees or appointed committees, um, we're not taking public questions right now, but please feel free to email them in. Um, to towncouncil@tallinn.org. Um, if, if you have something specific you would like us to, to ask. Um. I don't see any other. Any other hands up at this moment, so, um. Oh, alright, Sophia.
Please forgive me, Madam Chair, but can we look toward having Mike Rosen push for more public participation? That's all.
Well, yeah, yeah, so, um, this is gonna be, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming. Um, and the Leibowitzes for giving their presentation and that, I think. I am up to about page five of notes and questions. Um, so there's a lot for us to kind of, to take away and talk about here, I know Rick was on, and he was taking down questions also. So, um, I see this kind of moving forward as we have to. Again, go over. I think that the, the primary decision that needs to be made for, um, the Birch Grove Building Committee is, uh. Is really the first question, and that's whether or not there's any change order to go in place, and I think that it has to be made in conjunction with the schools. Um. In the usage of the field and everything else, so I think we've got a lot of. A lot more talking that we have to do, we'll try to get something, Katie, I'll have, um, Mike reach out to you guys. So we can, uh, between you and Dr. Willett, um, and the Board of Ed, and everybody to kind of. Re-ground after we had this meeting and, and see where we stand, and I know you're, you're on some pretty serious or tight deadlines right now, and I've never been quiet about wanting this project finished on time, and so we don't want to do anything that. Is gonna put any kind of, um. Any kind of cake in what you're doing there, so, um. If you guys were to pursue a change order, what is the timeline you would be looking at having to, to do that in?
Um, Todd, can you answer that question, I'm sorry, I can't remember when Damato needs a commitment.
I'm assuming you have Kenny, right?
Yeah, Todd, you're muted, we can't hear you.
There was a timeline that I put together, Katie, uh, on this, and that was obviously pretty aggressive, you know. Uh, I'm not sure if it's Damato that's. You know, in charge of the timing. Um, I think it's the question of whether or not, right, the Building Committee will take this to. The, uh, state. Uh, education. See if they'll allow it, right?
Yes, uh, the issue of the state, uh, allowing it is certainly something that needs to be brought up. Right now, everything is scheduled and contracted to move forward.
Right.
Um, you know, as, as the contract documents lay out, I feel like if. Damato was gonna do the change order, the actual work would be done, um, starting in September. But they wanted a commitment from you guys before then, so that they could appropriately deploy. If, if I remember correctly, so I think we have a little bit of time.
Yeah, so there, so, but now there's a logistical issue here that we just got raised by Tammy about whether or not the Leibowitzes. Can contractually obligate themselves with Damato separately, or does it have to go through the town? Because it's on town property.
I see Ben shaking her head on that too, so.
So, I, so I think we need to get a couple of answers from, I mean, we, I got something from Damato today that I need to look at, right? And, uh, you got it too, um, and all I said to him was. Thanks, I'll look at it, right? And so we have to look at what that is, so, um, again, I'd like to talk to you offline about their thirty-five hundred dollar credit. You know. And, and. Way I interpret it, alright, so, but I'm not on the Building Committee either, uh, and I'm making your life. Uh, uh, a little bit more complicated. Um, so, but yeah, I don't know those questions, or the answers to those questions, wh- when does Damato need an answer? I think what we talked about, if they had an answer by June. They would be good to be able to mobilize and do the work.
I don't see that there's any way possible for them to get an answer by June, um, that's just off the top of my head, it's May twenty-fourth. And there are, I guess, five pages I have of notes and questions, and that I can't see that the town would be in a position to make a commitment by June on this, but. Um. That's just me on that, so Katie's kind of like, you know.
I.
Well, I guess.
Damato is very passive about their time frames.
Pardon me, Katie?
Yeah. D- Damato, uh. Is very aggressive about their timeframes, um, and. I, they're not go- in real, the real, the reality of the situation is that the, um. There's not gonna be any work to the field until at least September.
Hmm.
Um.
I agree.
Because they're, they have, they're spending the summer taking the modulars apart, and they, you know, they don't all leave until the end of August, so there, there's no work being done there, not a lot anyway, till the end of Sep- till September.
I'm glad I heard you say that, because they, they, they won't be touching that field until September.
They're just gonna be taking stuff out of it, you know, they're just gonna be taking the, the modular stuff.
Right.
And it's gonna take a while.
Right. So, I, I, I guess, to answer your question, let's ask Damato when their drop date is.
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Alright, um. Last shot, anybody, anything else? Otherwise, um, I'm going to, uh, let's see, it's a special session, so Steve, I don't know if, um. You wanna move to a, a join, and then we can kind of, uh. Regroup.
Yep.
After.
Steve, Jim, Steve is gonna make a motion to adjourn at nine forty-three PM.
And Felicity, I will second.
Okay, so I just need Town Council on this, so, uh, Brenda.
I.
Sophia.
I.
Steve.
I.
John. I don't think John was able to join.
Yeah, John, John never made it, I think it's Lou and Kurt together too.
Lou.
They're on still.
Hi.
Kurt.
Hi.
I'm an I, that is unanimous, thank you all very much for your, for the presentation and for coming tonight, uh, and I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you.
Here be well, me in touch.